Welcome to the City Council Meeting of December 15, 2022. City Clerk, could we have a preamble, please?
This meeting is compliant with the Ralph M. Brown Act as amended by California Assembly Bill Number 361, effective September 16, 2021, providing for a public health emergency exception to the standard Conference Rules required by the Brown Act. The purpose of this is to provide a safe environment for the public staff and council members while allowing for public participation. The public may address the council remotely or in person. The council may take action on any item listed in the agenda. Members of the public may view the City Council Meeting by logging into the Zoom webinar listed below. City Council Meetings can also be viewed live and/or on-demand via the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/brisbaneca, or on Comcast Channel 27. Archive videos can be replayed on the city's website, brisbaneca.org/meetings. You can address the council remotely or in-person, and the agenda materials may be viewed online at brisbaneca.org at least 24 hours prior to a special meeting and at least 72 hours prior to a regular meeting. Meeting participants are encouraged to submit public comments in writing in advance of the meeting. Aside from commenting while in the Zoom webinar, the following email and text line will also be monitored. During the meeting and public comments received will be noted for the record during Oral Communications 1 and 2 or during an item. Email ipadia@brisbaneca.org, text 628-219-2922. Join the Zoom webinar, zoom.us, with the ID 991-9362-8666, and the passcode is 123456. The call-in number is 1669-900-9128. To make an in-person comment, you can come to City Hall and fill out a speaker card. If you need special assistance to participate in this meeting, please contact the City Clerk at 415-508-2113. Notification in advance of the meeting will enable the city to make reasonable arrangements to ensure accessibility to this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, City Clerk. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Lentz.
Here.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
And Mayor Mackin.
Here.
First item tonight is the adoption of the agenda. Would like to request a couple amendments to tonight's agenda. First is to correct a typographical error under New Business Item X. It should indicate that a brief break will be held after Item X. Would also like to add an Item F under Mayor and Council Matters to discuss the appointments for the City Selection Committee Meeting, which takes place tomorrow, Friday, December 16. That being said, could I get a first and second to approve the agenda as amended?
So move, Madam Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to adopt the agenda as it stands with one exception. If we could move Item... Whoops, sorry. I've got new glasses on and can't see very well. Item ZAA, further up into the agenda between probably S and T, as we have the consultant in the room and would not want to think the consultant was going to sit here until the end of this meeting. Is that possible, please?
I would just make one correction. Item Z is a separate item, so the next one would be Item AA.
Sorry, under ZAA, yes, sorry. If we could move that to between S and T, if that makes sense, then our consultant...
That's under New Business following Item S.
Correct.
Okay. So are you making that motion now?
I'm making that motion with moving Item AA to between S and T.
All right. And the additional corrections that I had previously enumerated?
Yes, thank you.
And a second on that motion?
Second.
Was that Davis?
Yes.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin.
Aye. Next item, we move to Oral Communications Number 1. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to make a comment. That needs to be any item that is not on tonight's agenda. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public indicating they'd like to speak?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three slips. We have Nancy Laxamana.
Okay, before you just read them off, why don't we just start with Nancy? Nancy, good evening. Why don't you just go ahead?
Oh, Nancy, let me go make sure the audio is on. Just a minute. Okay, try now.
Thank you. Good evening, councilmembers. I have three items to discuss in my two minutes of general public comment. Something struck me as odd during the November 17 meeting, virtual, in which a councilmember challenged a phone number and said, "Identify yourself." I did look that up. That person was me. I was not intending to speak. No other people, no one else in the public was asking to speak at all at that meeting. The councilperson mid-sentence asked that a phone participant identify themselves. The Brown Act of 54953.3 states that you cannot ask a member of the public to identify themselves or have a list at the meeting in order to identify themselves. 54953.3. So I just wanted to call your attention to that. The second thing is, I really strongly believe that the City Council needs to start having hybrid and/or in-city-hall meetings like all other government bodies. Councilmembers have been attending in-person social events, in and outside, with and without masks. If a councilperson has concerns for medical reasons, I completely understand that, and please honor their request. All of us who work outside of our homes or businesses have returned to either full-time work or hybrid scheduling. Those in kindergarten attend school longer than your meetings, which is a good thing. A good part of your communication problem is clearly you're not talking to each other. It has been proven that in-person dialogue is more effective in resolving issues and hearing from the public than only online interaction. The third point I wanted to make is this in-person meeting and the unfortunate community spin it has caused. I will be sending a list of questions to the city manager to please explain what happened. I would appreciate compliance under the Freedom of Information Act. Thank you very much.
City Clerk, we have someone else?
Hi, my name is Kim Folene, and I'm a Brisbane resident. The agenda for tonight's meeting specifies it will be an exclusively virtual meeting. However, I was made aware that friends and supporters of the incoming mayor and mayor pro tem were invited to attend in person, and one councilmember had been told he could only attend the outgoing mayor's reception in person, but otherwise wasn't allowed to be on the dais. The other two councilmembers were given a choice to attend in person or not. The spin response from the city's communications director, when this was called out on the residents' Facebook page, was that in recognition of Stuart's retirement, the city had invited, via the December Star, those that wanted to wish him well to attend in person if they wanted to. And the number of councilmembers on the dais was being limited due to COVID. I'm not buying any of this. You had plenty of time to put this public invite on the agenda, the signboard, the blast, and your post on the city's official Facebook page. Your COVID excuse makes no sense. You've invited people to attend in person without limit, and there will be refreshments, so eating, no masks. What happened, I think, is you got caught, and you're just trying to cover your tracks to hide your true intentions. This is honestly such a low for the city staff and councilmembers that were involved in this, and I can't believe you thought this was okay. The city's response should have been to take accountability and apologize. That's how you build trust and integrity, and right now you have none with me. Enjoy your party.
Okay, City Clerk, did you indicate it was a third person?
Michael Barnes. Open Communication Number 1.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Barnes. I'm a Brisbane resident. The public notice for this evening's meeting states that the public may address the council using exclusively remote public comment options, and also that the City Council Meeting would be an exclusively virtual meeting. Then we heard that supporters of the recently re-elected councilmembers were going to be allowed to attend this meeting in person, and those who wanted to honor Stuart Schillinger on his retirement had also been invited to attend in person. On the heels of a divisive and secretive mayoral selection process, this seemed like a way to exclude the public and only include the ruling party insiders to a public meeting in the public's house. This council has acted in an authoritarian manner more frequently recently and is losing the trust of the community. As do most authoritarians, you violate your own rules. For instance, tonight you use COVID as an excuse for a virtual meeting while inviting your friends to attend in person. This clearly shows that it is not COVID that you want to keep out of City Hall. It is the general public you wish to banish. This seems contrary to the spirit of flying the Pride and Black Lives Matter flags that are supposedly about inclusion of all, but consistent with your authoritarian MO, you erected the flags without consulting the community or having a flagged policy. Similarly, you spent $4 million in the Bank of America building without consulting the community or having even the remotest idea of a plan for the site. You said you would consult with the community once purchased, but you still have not consulted with the community and have selected your first land use for the site, a private battery swap company that services corporate fleets. At a meeting of the Public Art Committee, Councilwoman Davis decreed that there would be no skaters painted on the skate park wall and launched into an attack on a community member in violation of the Public Art Guidelines. Councilwoman Davis listing City Hall as her personal campaign headquarters is a violation of election law but consistent with an authoritarian mindset. I don't expect you to do better. That is who you are. I just hope you are unable to harm Brisbane any more than you already have.
City Clerk, do we have anyone else wishing to speak?
For the members in Zoom, if you'd like to use the raised hand function to indicate you'd like to make public comment, please do so now. We have James Christie, Madam Mayor.
All right, James, go ahead.
Hello, Council and fellow citizens of Brisbane. What I wanted to speak on tonight was our selection of mayor and a concern I have about the culture of our current city council. I moved to Brisbane in 2016, and one of the things I was most impressed by was a precedent that the council had established that assured that every five years, a member of the council would get to serve as mayor, and they'd also assured that a councilmember would serve during their first term that they had elected. For some reason, our current council has abandoned this tradition, and I...
James, can I stop you for one second? That item is on the agenda tonight?
Oh, is there a specific time I need to address my comments?
Yes, please. Without objection from my colleagues, I'd like to suggest that there be public comment under Item V. So, James, if you could just hold that, because Oral Communications is usually reserved for items that are not on the agenda.
I will definitely do that, Madam Mayor.
But hold that. You can start it over when we get to that item.
I will do that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
City Clerk, we have anyone else?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. We move on to the Consent Calendar. And can I get a first and second to approve Consent Calendar Items A through R, please?
I move to accept Items A through R.
Okay, that's a...
Second.
A motion by O'Connell. Can I have a second? Second from Lentz. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Mackin.
Aye. Tonight I have the honor, moving to our next agenda item, to recognize Stuart Schillinger for his decades of service to the city of Brisbane, or have a proclamation I would like to read. Whereas Stuart Schillinger played a key leadership role in the fiscal management of the city of Brisbane for over 21 years, whereas Stuart provided insight and creative solutions to the many public policy issues that arose during his tenure, first as Finance Director in 2001, then as Administrative Services Director, and now as Assistant City Manager. Whereas Stuart explored program-based budgeting, which evolved into priority-based budgeting, this innovative approach gave Brisbane leaders the framework to make financial decisions based on an organization's goals tied to five values: safety, community building, ecological sustainability, fiscally prudent, and economic development. Whereas Stuart promoted significant changes in technology, budgeting, and utility management, he also led the city's Innovation Group Equity Plus Inclusion Committee, and in 2021 helped launch the council-appointed Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Accountability, also known as the IDEA Committee. Whereas Stuart was instrumental in leading staff development of the funding package for the new Brisbane Library, the effort was successful, turning the project into a reality with the completed library opening last April. Whereas Stuart exercised strong management skills in his leadership of finance, parks and recreation, human resources, IT, and open space during his tenure, Stuart led by example and was generous in sharing knowledge. He provided strong support to staff as well as coaching young professionals through the city's intern program. Whereas Stuart's leadership, mentoring, and guidance in the organization will be sorely missed. Now therefore, be it resolved that we issue this proclamation to recognize the positive impact of Stuart's contributions over the past 21 years, and in appreciation for his efforts that will continue to benefit the community at large and the next generation. I understand Saul Miranda, who is a district representative from the office of State Senator Josh Becker, is also here to recognize Stuart. Saul, we've got you there. You want to go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor Mackin. Really appreciate it. So my name is Saul Wurdeney from Senator Becker's office, and I'm here today to share some words on behalf of Senator Becker to recognize Assistant Manager Stuart Schillinger in appreciation of your years of service and leadership as Assistant Manager for the city of Brisbane. Through your service with the city of Brisbane, you have been a remarkable champion for our community and residents. On behalf of the people of the 13th Senate District, please accept our gratitude for your good work and sincere best wishes in your future. On behalf of Senator Becker, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you, Saul. Any additional comments the councilmembers would like to make?
Madam Mayor, we also have David Canepa's office here.
Oh, very good. Go ahead.
That's Mr. Kevin Joyner.
Hey, Kevin? There you go. Thank you. Mr. Joyner, go ahead.
Again, sorry. My name's Kevin Joyner. Very happy to be here tonight, and just first of all, on behalf of the Office of Supervisor Canepa, we just wanted to wish everybody a happy holidays and just warm congratulations to all the newly elected officials of Brisbane, but more now, and also to Stuart Schillinger. I just wanted to offer our congratulations for so many years of service, and I just wanted it to be proclaimed that David J. Canepa and the Board of Supervisors of the County of Simontail and State of California hereby honors Stuart on his outstanding work on the striving of great change within the communities, and we congratulate you on your amazing career in Brisbane, and we wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. And trust me, in this office, we're very excited to see what those future endeavors entail. Thank you for everything you have done, and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner. Well, let's then go to council comments. Councilmember Lentz, would you like to make a comment?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Stuart, I just want to thank you so much for your dedication to our city. You know, I remember us being soccer coaches and coaching your son, and you know, just kind of growing together, me as a public servant, and you know, as a commissioner, and then as a councilmember, and you as our Finance Director, but then, of course, wearing all those other hats. You know, you really helped me to understand the nuts and bolts of the financial part of how the city is run, but then also, you know, you were so much more than that. You know, you cared a lot about just everyday people, you know, and how we should treat each other with respect and integrity and fairness, and that was, you know, those are the things that, more so than just the financial part, that I take away, and I wish you all the best in your new life outside of public office, and yeah, and happy holidays to your family as well. Take care.
Councilmember Davis.
Stuart, we're going to miss you so much. You've been really one of the major backbones to the city of Brisbane and especially as city staff. I feel like you've had a hand in everything, whether that be park and recreation, finance, public art. I've had the pleasure of working with you first as a Park and Rec Commissioner and then as a city councilmember, and you have been such a wealth of historical knowledge of how the city has done things in the past. I think one of my favorite things about you is the way that you always ask, "Well, what is the purpose? What is the purpose? What are we trying to do with this body, or what are we trying to accomplish with this project?" And I think that while that's such a simple thing to contemplate, so often, we need that reminder to think about what is the big goal here, and so I'm going to miss that guidance. I'm going to miss seeing you around City Hall, but I am excited for your new adventure, and I hope you're not a stranger. So thank you.
Councilmember O'Connell?
So Stuart, thank you so much for giving me guidance when I first came on the council to understand what the budget was and how it worked, and to realize, and it made me realize how much work goes into putting us in a good position to move forward. You helped set us up where we didn't fail during the first financial crisis, and we are in a much better position with our PERS and other pension obligations because you had the foresight to look at those things. And, you know, to me, one of the really exciting things that we worked on together, in a way, was you finding a way to fund renovations out at the marina when money was short and it didn't look like it was going to be possible to keep it a world-class marina, and you were able to do that, and I'm very thankful, and I know a lot of the community here is thankful for that also. And I too wish you wonderful luck and a fabulous post-retirement life. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Stuart, for all the jokes that I made about he's the guy who does all the stuff that the rest of us don't want to do, I just want to say that one more time. You were the guy that did all the stuff that the rest of us really didn't want to do. You crunched those numbers like nobody else, and from a personal perspective, your sense of humor was just second to none, and that is the thing, I think, outside of the professional realm that everybody else has spoken about, that I will miss the most, is that your wonderful sense of humor, your humanity, and your humble disposition. Thank you so much, and you will be sorely missed. Thank you.
Stuart, I just have to say, I think it's very hard to find someone who can look at a situation from 30,000 feet and then also not miss one speck of detail that could be way down on the floor, and I think you're that person. And it's obvious your people skills have really affected people. Probably hard for some people to keep from crying with your departure, so all I can say is it's going to be tough to see you go. I think your fingerprints are on everything in City Hall, literally everything, so you'll be gone, but those fingerprints, everything you touched, you were involved, and that is very appreciated, and I know the people that you mentored are never, ever going to forget you. And I would also just say, good luck in this next chapter. I think you'll have a good adventure. I hope you do, and I hope you don't forget us, and you come back and tell us stories and keep that very, very wry sense of humor that we all dearly, dearly love. Thank you very much. And I believe we have a member of the public has asked also to speak. City Clerk?
Michelle Salmon.
Michelle, go ahead.
Stuart, I wish I could be there in person to honor you. I just want you to know how much I'm one of those people who's going to cry. I'm sorry, I don't want you to leave. You've been so honest and straightforward and helpful in so many ways, and I have always trusted you. I knew I could always get a straight answer from you. I've sent so many people to you. "Oh, why are we spending this for that?" I said, "Ask Stuart, he'll tell you. He always will tell the truth," and that's you, Stuart. I loved working with you on open space and ecology and all the things that you've done, and it's a sorry day for the city of Brisbane when you decided to retire, but I am so proud of you to go on to this new career and follow your dreams, and don't forget us, and please don't leave Brisbane because you're a very important part of it, and thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. City Clerk, is there anyone else at this time wants to speak? Nancy, go ahead.
Thank you. Stuart, I wanted to tell you how much I appreciated through the years that you helped the community, especially the school community, navigate all of the bus issues. For many years, I hounded you on trying to help figure out a solution when the Jefferson School District dropped us as a community with a school bus, and you, along with Clay, worked through not only first the CYO program to send us, but then also the city paying for the kids to get to school, but you were tireless in trying to help the school community solve that problem, and I've been very happy to help out also, to have Samtrans now take care of all the high schools that we serve. now take care of the, all the high schools that we service, but I want you to know how much that's appreciated. And I'll never forget what you did. Thank you very much.
Maria Sid?
So I couldn't pass up an opportunity to say something about Stuart because I had so few opportunities to embarrass him. So, but one of the things that I thought was interesting was when Stuart interviewed me in 2004 to join the city of Brisbane. And I remember getting the call. And I couldn't, I did not remember who George was that I was interviewing with. It turned out that for some reason, whenever Stuart said his name across the phone, it came across as George. And I was so confused. Who is this person offering me this job? But I took the job anyway. And I'm going to try not to cry because that's embarrassing to do in public. But Stuart has been instrumental in how I came into local government. He supported me when I came on board. Right away when I started, I actually had some personal things going on. Soon after I started, I found out my mother had cancer. I was scared because I started a new job. But Stuart pulled me aside and told me it was okay. My job was protected. Do what I need to do. And that's just the type of person that Stuart is. He's able to see the person before anything else. He completely supported me when I made the transition into local government. I knew what I was doing when it came to human resources, but working in local government was completely different. And I couldn't have asked for a better mentor for that. He was such a good mentor that through the years, he always gave me great opportunities to move forward. And he mentored me to a point where instead of me just being comfortable with what I was doing, he gave me interest to advance my career. And when I was ready to move on from Brisbane after 15 years, Stuart was there to support me and to guide me. And even after I left, he's always been there to support and guide me. We have been, he's one of the best friends I've ever made in Brisbane. He's one of the best colleagues you could ever have. When you hear these talks about the internship program, about the mentoring of staff, about the development, it all started with Stuart. Stuart is the epitome of a true public servant. He is sorely going to be missed in this industry, but it's good to know that his next steps are going to be tied to it in some way. So with that, Stuart, congratulations. Again, I couldn't miss the opportunity to embarrass you in public, but from the bottom of my heart, thank you for everything. I love you and I think this is the best move for you. Good luck and of course, keep in touch and let me know when we're getting together for lunch. Thank you.
City Clerk, do we have anyone else that's requesting to speak?
Mitch Bull would like to speak.
Go ahead, Mitch. You're muted, Mitch.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay. Stuart, I just want to say thank you for all the years that you've worked with the city of Brisbane during my tenure at the Chamber and in economic development and the policies and procedures and your caring for the community and the things that you did and the vision to help get us, get us through, you know, the 2008 recession and the recessions we've had since then. And the city is in much better financial shape than it has any reason to be, thanks in large part to what you put together in process and, and policies. So, congratulations in your move to the private sector, but thank you so much. And I will miss you.
City Clerk, we have anyone else requesting to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right. Stuart, I hope it's not goodbye. We will still see you in town. Thank you for all you've done. You, you've just heard a lot of love and, and I'm sure there's a lot more that people who weren't here to speak tonight. Thank you.
Does Stuart want to say a few words?
You know me, if I have a mic in front of me, always. But I had to write it out because I had to remember what I wanted to say. But I apologize for that. When I received my MPA at Maxwell School of Citizenship and Public Affairs, the Athenian oath was displayed on one of the walls and it reads, "We will ever strive for the ideals and sacred things of the city, both alone and with many. We will unceasingly seek to quicken the sense of public duty. We will revere and obey the city's laws. We will transmit the city not only not less, but greater, better and more beautiful than it was transmitted to us." I hope that I have done that for this community. If I have, there are a lot of people I need to thank. First, the community members who embraced me and my family over the years since we arrived in Brisbane in 2001. I appreciate all the community members who care deeply for this community and strive to improve it with their actions. Over the years, I have worked with 13 council members. All of them have been dedicated to improving the city and upholding community values. I appreciate and am grateful for the trust and respect of all of the members of the council have shown me over my many years of service. I will forever take with me the conversations we have had with, to speak with, to the hard work and dedication each and every council member has shown. As for staff, I say this every chance I get, Brisbane has one of the best and most dedicated staffs I could ever have worked with. The employees here are at the top of their fields and have been recognized not only within the county, but also in the state as dedicated public employees who have the best interests for this community, not only in their minds, but also in their hearts. The city staff has faced many challenges together, including major economic, health events, changes in state and federal law, which required us fundamentally to change the way we do our jobs, and turnover in staff which forced us to reinvent ourselves. Through it all, we have persevered and continued to provide the quality services to our community we all strive for. More than anything, staff has been there for each other, as you would hope from a closely knit group of people or a family. I appreciate and thank all of you for the support and good times we have had together. A special thank you goes to Clay. Sun Tzu said, "A leader leads by example, not by force." Clay has been an example for me ever since I met him when I was 31. I have tried to live up to the example he set as a supervisor, public employee, someone who recognizes talent in others, and most importantly, as a human who cares for his fellow humans. If at the end of my career, it can be said that I've been able to live up to the example Clay has set, I would consider that I have been accomplished something meaningful. Finally, I would not be who I am today without my parents and my wife. My parents ensured that I had the love for public service and helping others. Diane has been there every step of the way in my public administration career. She drove me to my college interview at Syracuse. She stood by me when I needed to move to Arizona to start my career. She encouraged me to apply to jobs in Encinitas, Reno and Brisbane. She was always available to take care of matters if I needed to work late, go to late meetings, fly across the country to do my job. Diane did this without a moment of thought about how many of this affected what she wanted to do. She was also there when I needed to bounce an idea off of someone about something going on at work. Diane has had the most influence in making me who I am today and for that, I will be forever grateful. And I truly appreciate the opportunity that this community has given me to serve them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We move on to our, our adjusted agenda. Moved item double A up, which is the review, sorry, review projected water and sewer rate increases and direct staff to begin the 218 process to increase rates. Could we have a staff report, please?
Yes, I will take, I'll begin this, but I'll turn it over to Catherine, who is our rate study consultant. As you remember, last year you had, we had employed Lechowitz and saying to do a rate study for our water and sewer rates. We have not increased our operational rates since 2012. In the meantime, we have increased two other rates. We've increased our capital charge and we've increased our drought reserve charge. Both of those were for very specific purposes. One was to do, improve, maintain our capital, maintain our infrastructure. And the other one was to make sure that during a drought, we would not need to raise rates as people were using less water. City Council took the very good idea at that point that when people are using less water, it seemed counterintuitive to charge them more for less. So we have set aside a capital reserve, drought reserve for that. But we haven't raised rates since 2012 to cover the day-to-day expenses, to cover the cost of the increase in the cost of water for us, which Catherine will go over, the cost in sewer processing, which Catherine will go over, nor just the general increase in the overall inflation costs that we've been facing since 2012. And with that, I will turn it over to Catherine to go through the rate study. So that way, you know, hopefully we can move forward and go forward with the 218 process.
Thanks, Stuart. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff and the public. As Stuart mentioned, I have a presentation which summarizes the study that we've been reviewing since, I believe, like since 2020. So tonight is the culmination of working with the Infrastructure Subcommittee with staff, the rates that we are presenting, we believe are neat, well, they are needed so, so that the city can recover its full cost of providing water and sewer service. So I will, I have a presentation that I will share. All right, just want to... Just to continue on from the background that Stuart invited, so the last comprehensive operational rate study was completed in 2001 with the last rate increase for the water and sewer, sewer rates was in 2012. You did have the capital project charge was implemented in 2014 and the second increase, which was just approved by the council, will go into effect in 2023. And again, the drought contingency charge was adopted in 2018. So tonight, we're focusing on the water and sewer operational rate. I wanted to point out that the water and sewer funds, they're enterprise funds, which means they're completely separate from the general fund. And they are self-supported from the water and sewer rate and other charges that, from specifically water and sewer only. So these funds do not receive any tax or, so your sewer and water rates goes to pay for only sewer and water operations and capital needs. And our rate study period covers a five-year period, beginning fiscal year 2023, '24 through 2027, '28. So we're proposing that the first rate increase will go into effect July 1st, 2023, which coincides with, with the beginning of the fiscal year. So on your bimonthly utility bill, there's five charges. There's the water use charge, which is based on your actual consumption. There's the water service charge, that's a fixed charge for water use. That's levied regardless of the amount of water you use. There's also the sewer charge, which includes a flat and variable charge, which I will explain during the sewer section. And there's also that capital project charge and drought contingency charge. Those, we are not, we did not look at, at this study. We simply looked at only the first three charges, the water use and water service as well as the service charge. So water and sewer rates are governed by Proposition 218, which is part of the California Constitution. It was adopted by voters in 1996. Basically, 218 governs how property-related charges, which includes water, sewer, garbage, also stormwater rates, how they are adopted. So these rates must be based on the reasonable cost of service. Rates also must be proportionally recovered based on how customers take the service. So we cannot just arbitrarily set different rates for different customer classes. Also, the revenues from the rates can only be used for the intended purpose. So water and sewer rates can only be used for water and sewer purposes. The general fund or another fund cannot take these revenues. Oh, apologies. And the rate study covers a five-year period. That's the maximum time period that Proposition 218 allows an agency or a city to implement rates for. There's also procedural requirements. First is to conduct the rate study. Second is, once every study is complete, the city must mail a notice to all property owners explaining that what is going on, that a rate increase will be taking place. After that notice is mailed out, the city must hold a public hearing, a minimum of 45 days after the notice is mailed. And at that hearing, the rates cannot be adopted if more than 50% of rate pairs submit written protest. So why are these rate increases needed? Well, first and most importantly is to fund the cost of providing water and sewer service. So that includes operating maintenance costs, which is staff, chemicals, supplies, everything that is needed to run these systems. It also includes debt service, also capital improvement project, and also reserve funds for emergency. We also need rate increases to meet debt service coverage, which I will go into in the next slide. We also need to eliminate the sewer operating deficit. As you'll see, the sewer fund has been running a deficit for the past four, at least four years. We also want to retain a positive credit rating so that the city can go out for future debt financing to pay for the capital improvement projects. So we looked at several rate scenarios for the water and sewer fund and we based our scenarios on these objectives, which are as a measure, which are used as a measure of the financial stability of each of the funds. So the first objective is to meet debt service coverage. So debt service coverage is the financial measure of an agency's ability to repay outstanding debt. So when the city issues bonds or COPs, they agree to maintain a debt service coverage of 1.25, which means that net operating revenues divided by total annual debt service cannot be more than 1.5. So if we do not meet this 1.25 ratio, technically we could be in default of our bond payments and it puts the city in a position to go out for future debt. So when we set these rates, we want to make sure that we're meeting that ratio. The second target is to meet our fund reserve target. The operating reserve targets for both the water and sewer fund is 25% of O&amp;M and that's an annual target. There's also that drought contingency reserve, which is the target's about 700,000. We also want to maintain positive net operating revenues, which means that each utility is covering its cost of service and we're not dipping into reserves or relying on reserves to cover annual costs. I'm going to start with the water utility. So as an overview of the water system, the city relies solely on purchased water from the SFPUC. The city purchases approximately 302,000 cubic feet per year. The total city consumption is about, on average, 283,000 cubic feet per year. The water system is divided into four pressure zones, includes three storage tanks and two booster tanks. And the city's water system is also interconnected with the Guadalupe Valley Municipal Improvement District system. In total, there's about 2,000 total accounts in the city. Single-family residential or, and multifamily residential rise the largest customer class. And the majority of customers have that 5/8 inch meter. So your, your water rate on your bill, you'll see that there's actually two components. There's that fixed charge that all customers are charged based on meter size. Although currently, that fixed charge does vary based on customer class and we're proposing to adjust that to make it more fair. So meter size is used as a proxy for the estimated demand each customer can place on the water system. So if you have a four-inch meter, you can place a lot more demand on the system than a 5/8 meter. So therefore, a four-inch meter, a larger meter should be, should be charged more. The goal of the fixed charges is to recover fixed expenses such as staffing, customer service and maintenance and repairs. And currently, this fixed charge generates about 15% of your total water sales revenue. So the second component of your water rate is that consumption charge, which is based on your actual bimonthly usage. So currently, the consumption charge, they vary. The ratio varies based on your meter size. So single-family residential customers, depending if you're a 5-inch meter, 3/4 inch- inch, or the one-inch meter, you could have six, four, or three tiers in your, your current rate structure can either be based on a six, four, or three tiers. So, but if you're a commercial or irrigation customer, currently, the rate structure is based on a three-tiered rate structure. It varies also based on your meter size. So the goal is, we intend to simplify this rate structure to make it more equitable and simpler for customers to understand. So these consumption charges, the goal is to recover your variable expenses, which includes your water purchases, which is the largest cost for the water system, and also utilities and chemicals. So currently, based on your current rate structure, consumption charges generate about eighty-five percent of your total water sales revenue. So here's a chart summarizing your current water rates. As I mentioned, your water rates vary based on meter size and based on customer class. So the most common meter size is a five-eighths-inch meter for residential. You're currently charged for your fixed charge is twenty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. That's over a two-month period. That's for the fixed charge. For consumption charges, it varies based on if you're a five-eighths-inch meter, you currently get one unit of water included in your fixed charge. However, if you're a three-quarter-inch meter or all the other meter sizes, you're charged according to a different rate structure. And I know this ratio has been, been in place for many years, but now with property team, we have to actually show why there are, why we have this many tiers. You know, we need to show, there's a reason why we're charging more for each level of tiered water. So for this study, we simplified rate structure, and we also provide a cost basis for our recommendation. So I want to kind of help the public understand. I know it's a little confusing why water rates are based on this one hundred cubic feet, and that's actually equivalent to seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. I didn't find a graphic that showed seven hundred forty-eight gallons, but what I wanted to, I thought it may be easier to understand in terms of bottled water. So when we talk about one hundred cubic feet, we're saying that's equivalent to seven hundred forty-eight gallons. So seven hundred forty-eight gallons is equivalent to about ninety-five thousand, seven hundred forty-four ounces, which is equivalent to five thousand, six hundred and sixty-five bottles of water. So when we say that we're charging per unit, we're actually, the amount of water that you receive is actually a lot more than just one unit of water. So for the water fund, currently, there's, the slide shows a financial overview. As of July first, two thousand and twenty-one, the reserves are about two point eight million. And then we were meeting our reserve fund target, and the drought reserve fund target, we're slowly getting there to the seven hundred thousand dollar target. And that drought reserve fund target will be, is funded purely from the drought reserve charges, not from the actual water rate. So for the past four years or so, the water fund has seen a positive net revenues, although it's slowly gotten, I guess, it hasn't, in two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, we saw net revenue about a million dollars. So for twenty, at the end of two thousand and twenty-one, that net revenue is about a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. So this chart shows a projection of future water operating expenses. So the blue is supplies and services, which includes water purchases from the SFUC. The water purchases account for over fifty percent of total operating expense. And those rates set by the SFUC, they're set by the SFUC. The city has no control over what the SFUC charges. So already, off the bat, fifty percent of your total operating expenses are out of the city's control. So this graph shows we use an escalation factor of about four percent for salaries, which is the purple. Benefits and payroll are also four percent escalators. For supplies and services, we're estimating, estimating about ten percent annual increase. And for admin charges, the green is three percent. So overall, total operating costs are expected to increase eight percent per year through two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So currently, your water sales revenues are about three million. Without water rate increases, the water fund's going to be operating in a deficit. Pretty soon, we're projecting by the end of this year, or the end of the next fiscal year in two thousand and twenty-three, the water fund would be operating in a deficit without any operational rate increases. So this chart summarizes the SFUC wholesale rates since two thousand and thirteen, fourteen. They've increased about ninety-four percent in the past ten years. And correspondingly, the city's operational, last operational rate increase was in two thousand and twelve. So while your cost for water has increased, the operational rates have. So without rate increases, the city's going to have to dip into their reserves and eventually run into an operating deficit. So we looked at the three scenarios to determine what the rate increases should be. The first scenario was where we looked at if the city did nothing, no rate increase. The second scenario was the eight percent annual rate increases just to cover your cooperating, your operating cost inflation. And the third scenario was nine percent annual rate increases. What we found was the nine percent, nine percent annual rate increases, we were able to meet those three objectives of meeting debt service coverage, meeting your reserve fund target, and meeting those positive total net revenues. And our goal was to meet those five goals at the end of the rate study period in two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty. So this chart summarizes what your, the projected ending water fund balance would be for all three of those scenarios. So the red dotted line is our, our target, and that includes both the operating fund reserve and the drought reserve. So with scenario one, the purple line with no rate increases, you're going to be into negative reserves by the end of two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five. The scenario two, the eight percent annual cost inflation rate increases, by the end of the, the study period in two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-eight, will be dipping below that fund reserve target. But with the nine percent rate increases, we'll be staying above that target and maintaining healthy reserves. So the proposed rate structure changes for the fixed charges, we are proposing that all customer classes will be charged the same fixture. So a five-inch meter residential customer will be charged the same as a five-eighths-inch meter commercial or irrigation customer. The charges will still vary by meter size, so that the larger meters will be charged proportionally higher based on their demand on the system. And also, we're proposing to give all customers, residential, commercial, all classes, that one unit of water included with the fixed charges. Currently, only the customers, residential customers with the five-eighths meter receive that one unit of water, but we are, we are proposing to include that one unit of water for all customers. For the consumption charges, we would like to simplify the current rate structures and propose a two-tiered rate structure for all customers. So all customers will be charged the same tiers. That tier one will be from one to twenty, hundred cubic feet of water. Currently, the average bimonthly residential use is ten hundred cubic feet. So with the feedback from the subcommittee, we believe that providing that tier one with double the amount of average residential use should be sufficient, should be a sufficient allotment for most customers. So tier two is anything over a twelve, twenty, hundred. Here are our proposed water rates based on the nine percent annual rate increases and the rate structure changes. So all customers will be charged the same rates, fixed charges and consumption charges. So for a five-eighths-inch meter customer, they'll be charged thirty-three dollars and thirty-five cents for the fixed charge. And these are bimonthly rates, meaning for every two months. So for the consumption charges, we're proposing the tier one rate will be six dollars and thirty cents, and the tier two rate is twelve dollars and sixty-five cents. I know there's a lot of numbers on here. I wanted to provide several bill impacts, just to give an example, to show customers what, what the impact to their bimonthly bill will be. And I want to point out, yeah, the average consumption is ten hundred cubic feet per bimonthly period, but also throughout the year, your water use does change, you know, from summer and winter, it tends to change. So your bill impacts will likely vary throughout the year. But for a average customer using that ten hundred cubic feet of water, we're proposing, I apologize, that the bill will go up about nine percent. You know what? Let me show you. I'll show a graphic. There you go. This is a chart that shows what the bill impact would be for that typical residential customer. So currently, your bill's eighty-two dollars and eighty-five cents, and we're proposing by the end of the five-year period, that'll increase to a hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-two cents. So this does not include the capital project charge or drought contingency charges, it's simply the fixed charge and the consumption charge for the operational rates. And I wanted, just to give comparison, what the cost is to purchase one gallon of water, it's about a dollar twenty-nine cents, that was when I was at Safeway the other day. But compared to what the cost of one gallon of tap water is, it's point oh one three cents, just to give a comparison, then it, like, no rate increases are not, no one likes rate increases, but we do want to show that the city has been keeping its costs down, and we do recognize that water is, is an important resource. And we just want to make sure that the city is recovering all of its costs for providing the service. So here is a bimonthly bill survey, and these charges do include the capital project charge and drought contingency charge. So we are comparing the city's current bill with surrounding agencies. Currently, with the capital project charge and drought contingency charge, the bimonthly bill for that average customer is a hundred twenty dollars and seventeen cents. With the proposed rate increase on July first of two thousand and twenty-three, the bill, total bill is projected to go up to a hundred twenty-seven dollars and thirty-five cents. And these are based on the current rates as of November two thousand and twenty-two. I believe many of these agencies will also be increasing their rates, since many of them also purchase water from the SFUC. So they are also facing the same wholesale water increases as the city of Brisbane. Okay, so that includes my sewer, I mean, I'm sorry, my water presentation. I can go on with sewer, or if we wanted to talk about water first. Is there a preference?
Let's see, maybe see if we have any water questions.
Okay.
It might be harder to, to go back in that. Council, do we have any questions? How about Councilmember Cunningham? You want to start?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Len?
Thank you, Catherine, for the presentation. It has been a pleasure working with you and Councilmember Mackin on the subcommittee and really just diving into all the different possibilities. You know, you know, you had the nine percent as the, as the increase and what the rates would be. And of course, if we, if we do the nine percent, we have the, you know, the positive outlook, you know, five years from now. At eight percent, we're kind of, no pun intended, but treading water. Do you, do you by chance have a chart that shows what the cost would be if it was at eight percent for users?
For the average user, you know, I, I do. I can pull it up. Give me a second. Eighty-nine, well, for July first, two thousand and twenty-three, it'd be eighty-nine dollars and twenty cents. That would, that's just the, the operational rate portion.
All right, and so eighty-nine can compare to?
Compared to... Ninety dollars and three cents.
All right. So not that much of a difference to the end user, but significant difference to the city as far as the financial health of our, our water system. Okay. And then, you know, you had that slide, Catherine, that showed the cost of the one gallon of, of water. Does that cost include all the costs for water, not the sewer, but just all the, the costs that go into providing water to, to customers?
Yes, it includes all the operating costs, so that includes debt service. I don't, I, I'm not sure if it actually includes all the capital project, but it does include the debt service for the capital project. I don't know if that, if I made that correct.
And, and the drought reserve as well?
Yes, so the drought reserve, though, is separate. That's, that's funded completely from that drought contingency charge, not from these operation rates. So my understanding is that once the city meets that seven hundred thousand reserve fund target, then the drought, the charge would be taken off of the bill.
Okay, all right, all right. So that's not in, in this calculation here?
No, it's not included in this calculation.
Okay, and those are all the questions I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Dave?
My question is for the subcommittee. After working on this and reviewing the suggestions, is this something that the subcommittee is recommending to the council?
I can start there. We spent a lot of time on this, I mean, lot, lot, lot of time, in way weeds, into the weeds and the detail, and worked with Catherine mightily to adjust those tiers and, and get that right, so we felt it was more fair and that it was, with her suggestions, for clarity. And after literally multiple meetings, I, I think this is about the fairest way to approach this, and, and we don't have a choice. We can't start pulling in reserves to pay everyone's water bills because that will jeopardize the financial health of the city. So that's my opinion. Councilmember Lenz?
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Councilmember, I mean, Mayor Mackin. You know, raising rates is, is, is not an easy thing to do at any time. You know, especially now with, with the high rates of inflation. But, you know, we also have a responsibility to the financial well-being of the city and to make sure that we are covering our costs. You know, as Catherine has said, you know, our revenues are based on, on, you know, consumption, you know, the, the water that people use. And so we, in order to be able to cover those fixed costs, we have, we have to, we have to raise the rates. You know, I think just the, the percentage, you know, is definitely up for discussion. I mean, you know, as a subcommittee, we, we dive deep into the details, kind of, you know, come up with various scenarios, and then in the end, put forth something that we think deserves merit and that, that we should discuss as a group. But knowing that, that in the end, the final decision is going to come from all of us. And, and of course, then being able to get feedback from the community. You know, at the subcommittee level, we usually don't get very many people attending. And so, you know, you're, you're having these discussions with staff and with the consultant, and that, that component is missing. And, and that's where it's, it's really helpful to, to have these meetings and, and get that feedback.
I think one other thing I would add is, it's really important, two, two items. We do not make money on water. We're just trying to sustain our rate. At the nine percent rate, the projection, the goal is to not go under where, where we're subsidizing water, because it's very difficult, and Brisbane has had a history where rates were not increased, and then suddenly, when it became unbearable, it, resulted in a, an increase that was really untenable for most water customers. We do purchase that water from the San Francisco PUC, and the rates we charge reflect their increases. We really don't have a choice. So it boils down to, how do we keep up with those increases? And how do we do so on a moderate level so that everybody in Brisbane? so that everybody in Brisbane can absorb those costs on an annual basis? So it doesn't seem like a big hit. So this is truly very, very careful planning for the duration up to 2027. And I hope that maybe things a little bit better.
And then, you know, also, Madam Mayor, you know, and this is, this is a question for Catherine. You know, what you're also recommending is, is creating a, a more fair rate structure for, for the fixed charges. And that by law, we are required to do that. So if you could, maybe just talk a little bit more about that?
Oh, how we're changing the rate structure? So, yes, so currently, as we showed your current rates.
We have all those tiers and now we have to reduce that.
So, yeah, so the, the goal of tiers is to encourage water conservation. But with Prop 18, we can't just arbitrarily set tiers. I'm not, I, I'm not saying that these were arbitrarily set. I know they're set many years ago. But we have to have a cost justification for why we have silver five-inch meter, why we have these six tiers. It's pretty difficult to have a cost justification for six tiers, given that the city's water source is a hundred percent the SFPUC water. So from the standpoint of trying to set tiers, like you have one source of water, so your costs for water are basically set. So, so for Prop, so what I'm saying with Prop 18, we need to have a justification for why we have any number of tiers. So, and, and why we have a different rate structure for different commercial classes. So tiers aren't as common for commercial customers because it's just in general, like, commercial uses vary, you know, from like a small bakery to, you know, big industrial test. But, but our goal with this ratio was basically to simplify the water rate structure and to give customers enough water in that tier one, that one to twenty, hundred cubic feet that we're closing, enough water for your everyday indoor water use and your outdoor waters. Basically, providing enough water for that average customer to use, plus some. So with that tier two, we're saying anything over that twenty hundred cubic feet, which is a lot of water, will be charged higher because it will cost the city more to purchase additional water above that average use. That's why we have, we're proposing a two-tiered rate structure.
Also, Cliff, Councilmember Lentz. The idea was that when we first did the rate structure, we did it in 2000, in 2001. The law has been interpreted differently as we've gone forward. What we've done is we've taken the rate structure we had in 2000, 2001, where that rate structure met the requirements of the time. However, there's been a number of court cases when it comes to water and sewer charges that have further defined how the rate structures need to be done. And so therefore, you know, when we went back and did the, re-looked at the overall rates, you know, rate structure, we needed to come into compliance with what's required as of today. That's the other issue that we're facing is, you know, we were using rate structures from 2000, when the last study was done. And the rate structures at that time really did talk to the idea of conservation, which is why we had so many different rate structures. However, the court cases have really come down to that one customer cannot pay for another customer's water. So by having multiple rate structures with a single source of water, so it doesn't cost you anymore for that next unit of water, it becomes more difficult to justify, you know, multiple, multiple rate structures.
Okay, yeah, and then if you just, you know, kind of clarify between residential and commercial and why that also has to be more fair?
Right, so a, a commercial customer cannot subsidize a residential customer. There had been a number of court cases where businesses have sued over that with cities to, and has caused the rate structures to change. Additional, what you can do, though, is you can say that a customer, the commercial customers could have one different, have a different rate than residents. However, in this community, the, the commercial customers and the residential customers have basically the same use for the water. What we do charge more, what we've charged more traditionally for is irrigation. And where we actually do get some differential between residential customers and commercial customers is the size of the meter. So what we do charge is we, you know, we charge more for the size of the meter. And also, as Catherine said, the average customer in our city uses ten units. That's more of the residential customers. When you start talking about landscape customers, they're using up to three, four hundred units of water. So, you know, so they will hit that twenty, most of their water will be charged at the twenty rate, whereas most of the residential customers will be charged at the below twenty rate. So there will be a difference there, and that's something we can justify.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Stuart.
Councilmember Davis, did that answer your question?
It did, thanks.
Councilmember O'Connell, you have any questions?
You know, I sat on the infrastructure subcommittee and, and we were involved in some of these discussions. And I think it's pretty straightforward when you see the graph that the only way we get to being balanced by the end of the structure, the rate time, is by doing the nine percent increase. So no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. City Clerk, public comments, anyone?
We have a handful of entries here. The proposal will treat commercial and residential, well, will the proposal treat commercial and residential customers the same? Are there resources for residents to investigate occult losses of water? Rate increase for increased usage penalizes residences that might try to be high-density or have accessory dwelling units.
Catherine, you want to tackle those? And since we got three questions, Ingrid, how about reading back to her first question?
Will the proposal treat commercial and residential customers the same?
Yes, we will have one, one rate structure for commercial and residential customers. So these are the rates for all customers.
However, as I said, that, you know, the commercial customers are more likely to go over the twenty units. So therefore, they, you know, they will pay at the twenty-unit level, whereas most residential customers, even if they go over twenty, it's minimally over twenty. So they'll be mostly charging the under twenty unit.
And Stuart, it's up to the twenty.
Yes, it's up to twenty.
And then afterwards, it kicks in.
Yes.
So every, all customers will be charged to six dollars and thirty cents per one to twenty hundred cubic feet. And then all customers will be charged the twelve dollars and sixty-five cents per, for all use over twenty hundred cubic feet. So it doesn't mean like all, all commercial is will be entered too. Everyone gets that tier one water allotment. And then after they hit that twenty hundred cubic feet, then you'll be charged about that tier two level.
And Ingrid, could we go back to the second question, please?
Are there resources for residents to investigate occult losses of water?
So I probably, I can handle that better than Catherine can. So our Public Works Department is always willing to work with the customers to determine if there's a leak. Also, one of the things that we do within the Finance Department, we have a person dedicated to our billing system. And what she does is she compares people's usage month by month, where period by period, because it's every two months, and also year over year, to see if there's an increase in the water usage that's, that can't be explained by either a, you know, an increase or by a year over year. And then she'll call the customer up and let them know that it appears that they might have a leak. And so if they, and gives them the ideas of where the leaks usually are, which are toilets. Toilets run, people don't know that. So, you know, and we have kits that will help the customers determine if they have a leak in their toilet. Also, we will send out the Public Works crew during the day to look at if somebody's meter, to see if it's running when all the water in their, in their, in their house is turned off. And if it's running when all the water in the house is turned off, there is a leak. And then we can help them try and figure out where that leak might be. So we do that. Also, if somebody has a leak in their, in their house, what we will do is if they get their leak fixed and they give us the, the receipts that they show that it's been fixed, and we can tell by the, the reduction in water, we will go back and actually reduce their bill to cover for the leak because we recognize that that was not water that was being used intentionally. We won't reduce it be, you know, below the cost of what it costs us to buy the water. But we will reduce it, you know, some, to some extent because there's other, there's other fixed costs that we have, such as, you know, having the crew there, having chemicals and all that. So we do work with customers when there's a leak in their, on their property.
That's great to know.
And the third question again, Ingrid?
Rate increase for increased usage penalizes residences that might try to be high-density or have accessory dwelling units.
I mean, I, I don't know if it, it penalizes them. What it's doing is charging people for the amount of water that they're, that they're using. You know, high-density, if you have a very efficient, high-density unit, you know, you may not use as much as a inefficient, low-density unit. Also, there's a number of units in our town where they actually, what they do is have separate billing unit, billing meters to separate dwelling units. So each, each dwelling unit within an apartment or within a condo complex may have a separate meter. So that way, we would read that meter and it would treat it as an individual unit, not as a high-density unit. So there are ways that, you know, high-density units can work through that kind of an idea.
So Stuart, wouldn't a ADU have a separate meter when they get service to that new dwelling? It would have a separate meter.
I mean, I, I think that would be one way to do it. I would, I would have to work with.
Isn't that required?
I'm a billing person, I'd have to ask our Public Works Department.
Okay, thank you.
City Clerk, do we have any other public comments or anyone wishing to make a comment?
An attendee wrote, "Thank you for your diligent work regarding water, water conservation, and keeping Brisbane fiscally sound."
And anyone wishing to speak, members of the public?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, council discussion. Who would like to start? Councilmember Cunningham?
Well, as usual, I think the presentation's great and the work of the subcommittee, obviously, very good as well with staff. This all makes sense to me and I think that nine percent's looking pretty good.
Okay, Councilmember Davis?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, take a motion.
We, we still need to talk about the sewer rate. So, I mean, as, as much as, as, you know, I would agree with you, the nine percent isn't bad. But let Catherine go through the sewer rate first. And it is, we are further behind. And as I've been saying, whenever I've come forward with a water and sewer report, we're further behind in sewer than we were in the water.
Is there a time, like a time concern in passing this item that we're having it being heard tonight? Just feels like kind of a big item.
It is a big item. I mean, you, you will hear this again because we, you don't pass it tonight. What you, what you're doing tonight is allowing us to inform the public through the 218 process of, that this is happening. And then we will send a letter to all of the customers and all of the property owners in town to, to let them know what is happening. And then, no less than forty-five days after that, this will come back to you. I think, you know, part of what we're trying to do tonight is, you know, I, I've been instrumental in working through this. So I wanted to be, as, as much as like, I'm not comfortable, you know, no one's ever happy about doing a water and sewer rate increase. But I wanted to make sure that this got, you know, went forward as, while I was still here.
That notification is required by law. So Councilmember Davis, the, the timing is in order to get that far enough ahead so that the rate increase can happen in July, if it passed and does not have opposition. If that helps in explanation. Okay, Catherine, you want to go ahead on the sewer?
Yes, okay. So the sewer system overview, the city maintains the sewer collection system and the city of San Francisco actually provides treatment. So I just wanted to give a total number of sewer counts is about two thousand. In total sewer flow is about a hundred seventy-three thousand, hundred cubic feet. So sewer flow is measured based on consumption because sewage actually isn't metered. We use water, water consumption as a estimate of sewer flow. The sewer rates includes a flat charge where all customer classes currently are charged the same flat charge. And this is the minimum charge for all customers, meaning if you're a customer, you will, you charge this flat charge regardless of how much flow you produce. Currently, the flat charge generates about thirty-nine percent of the total sewer service charge. A second rate component is that variable charge. And there's currently, the charge, there's a two-tiered rate structure based on usage. Residential use is based on winter consumption. Your use between October and January of a given year. The commercial rate varies based on customer strength. There's a low, medium, and high classes. And variable charge currently generates about sixty-one percent of total sewer service charge. So here are your current sewer rates. Currently, all customers, residential and commercial, are charged that bi-monthly flat charge of sixty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents. However, the tiered rates vary based on, if you're a residential customer or if you're a commercial customer. So that standard, medium, and heavy strengths. So a standard, a commercial customer would be like an office or a retail establishment or a store. A medium-strength customer would be like a automotive services or a restaurant or a laundromat. And a heavy commercial customer is, would actually be a restaurant or a food preparation establishment or lab. So the idea is that these heavy industrial customers, they place more of a burden on the sewer system. Therefore, they are charged more for having to treat what they put into the system. And I want to point out, there's, your sewer rate has a tier, has a tiered rate structure, which isn't common at all. I couldn't find another agency actually in California that has a tiered rate structure. So as we mentioned with the water rate structure, tier rates are used to encourage conservation. When it comes to sewage, there's really, I mean, can't, don't, can't conserve as much as you can with the water use. So we find that the tiered grades actually are not very conducive in actually promoting conservation. So we're proposing to eliminate this tiered grade. Here's the sewer fund overview. As of July first, 2021, the Indian Fund Reserve is about four point eight million. And again, that operating reserve fund target is twenty-five percent of annual ONM. As you'll see down here, for the past four years, the sewer fund has been operating in the deficit and that deficit has been growing. So it's projected at, at the end of last year, that that deficit is about one point two million. So the sewer fund is in the hole for about one point two million. So here's a graphic showing the projected operating expenses for the next five years. We use the same cost escalators as the water fund. So overall, operating cost inflation is eight percent. And so this green portion that accounts for your treatment costs, which are from the city of San Francisco, these treatment costs account for over fifty-eight percent of your total operating expenses. So the city has no control over those treatment costs. You just have to pay it because you need to treat your sewage. And currently, your sewer service charge revenue is two million. So as you'll see, you're not, you're currently not covering your expenses. And it's projected without rate increases, that deficit is just going to continue to grow and you're going to deplete your reserves. So here are the summary of the San Francisco sewer treatment processing rates since 2013, 14. They've basically doubled in that ten-year period. Within that same period, the city hasn't increased the operational sewer. So currently, the rate is projected at ten dollars and thirty-four cents. So we also looked at three scenarios. The first scenario was that no rate increase. The second scenario is at eight percent operating cost inflation, the eight percent annual operating cost inflation rate increase. And the third increases was the twenty-five percent annual rate increase. And we found that sewer fund needs twenty-five percent annual rate increases to meet debt service coverage by the end of the five-year period. We won't meet that sewer fund target. We're projected to meet that in 2930. But we should be seeing a positive total net revenue. So we'll slowly be getting out of that deficit by 2026, 27, 27, 28. So our proposed rate increases are twenty-five percent. This shows the projected sewer fund reserve balances. You'll see that for each of the scenarios, we're dipping below. scenarios, we're dipping below the sewer fund reserve target. But with that 25% rate increases, we're eventually climbing back up to meet that fund reserve target in about probably seven years, seven, eight years. We realized that the sewer fund is in a bigger deficit than water. So we're going to slowly climb out of this deficit to minimize the impact on customers. For rate structure changes, for the flat charges, we're proposing no change. All customers will continue to play that same flat charge. For the variable charges, we're going to keep the commercial strength categories, the standard, medium, and high. But we're going to eliminate the tiered rates for all customers. Again, the tiers are typically used for water to purge conservation and are less relevant to sewer flow. So here are the proposed sewer rates for residential. And residential and commercial, that flat rate, everyone will be charged the same, that $64.20. However, instead of the tiered rates, we're proposing just one uniform tier based on your flow. And that charge varies based on your customer class. So for residential, you'll be charged $8.29 for 100 cubic feet. And your residential use is, your residential bill is based on your winter consumption only. So October, November, December, and January. For commercial, they also have that same fixed flat charge, but your variable charge will vary based on your strength. We're saying that a standard commercial customer will be charged $9.02. And then the medium and heavy commercial customers will be charged more because they put more of an impact on the system. Commercial customers are charged based on their bi-monthly water use. So each period is different, whereas residential is just based on their winter consumption. So here are some bill impacts for a residential customer using 400 cubic feet every two months. Your current bill is $80.11 and is supposed to go up to $97.36 on July 1st. And they increase to $228 at the end of the five years. For that average residential customer that uses 1,000 cubic feet per month, the current bill is $106.77. It's proposed to go up to $340. I have a graphic, just in commercial impacts, but here's a graphic that shows the bi-monthly, proposed bi-monthly sewer bill for the typical residential customer. But this does not include the capital project charge. That capital project charge is actually split 50/50 between water and sewer. But this only shows the operational rate increase. This survey includes, that includes the capital project charge. So that dark portion is the fixed charge, the lighter green is the variable charge, and the light, light green is the capital project charge. So currently, for the typical customer, your bill is $141.67 with the proposed, oh, I'm sorry, it should say proposed July 1st, 2023, your bill goes up to $182.97. We did, the city does currently have a low-income rate assistance program. It's called LIRA. And your amount, the discounted amount varies. The water service for your fixed charge currently is a different percentage than sewer and fire service. We're proposing to simplify this low-income rate structure. So this discount will be funded from general fund, the general fund. Prop 18 doesn't allow rate revenues from one group of customers to subsidize the rates of another group. Therefore, the city needs to find a completely separate funding source for this discount. Currently, the general fund provides about $75,000 a year for the low-income discount, and that's split evenly between water and sewer. So our recommendation is to implement a flat 25% discount off your bi-monthly total utility bill. If the city wants to increase that discount, you can. You'll just have to transfer, we'll have additional funding from the general fund to fund the low-income rate assistance program. This is a, so a chart that shows your combined bi-monthly bills. I know that utility bill, you see a total amount. So this includes your water is the blue, the green is the sewer, and the capital charge and drop charges, those two other charges are the yellow portion. And this is a schedule. If the council decides to proceed with the Prop 18 process, we're proposing that the Prop 18 hearing would be held in March. Now, this is just a preliminary schedule, but based on, yeah, if we want to hold the Prop 18 hearing in March, the Prop 18 notices would be mailed out at the end of January. That concludes my presentation.
Council question? Councilmember Davis, you want to start?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Lent?
So Stuart, you know, the sewer rates are, they're really high. It's a huge increase from where we are now, but obviously, we have to cover those costs because of the costs that are passed down from San Francisco. You know, there's an opportunity for folks who are low-income to have a break on their rate. Can you talk a little bit more about that and how you would qualify, please?
Sure. So our low-income rate assistance program is based off of PG&E's rate assistance program. So if you are on the PG&E care program, you would qualify for the city's LIRA program. And all you have to do is show a electric bill or a utility bill that shows that you are part of the care program. The reason that the rates, the percentages have been different is because over the years, as rates have changed, city council has held the LIRA rate flat, which is, which is why the percentages are different for each of the different categories, because there was different increases for each of the categories. By making it a flat 25%, what you will be able to do is as the rates increase, the savings will also increase for the LIRA resident, for the people who are on LIRA. We usually try and announce LIRA through our various publications once a year, twice a year. And then also, again, since, you know, we are very familiar with our customers, when a customer is having some issues making payments, we bring up to the, we bring up to them that there is a, what the LIRA program is, we ask them if they are on the PG&E care program. And if they are, we ask them, when did they get on the PG&E care program? And if they got on the program a year ago, we will go back a year and reduce their bill for that for that entire year, even though they did not tell us that they were on the PG&E program. So we try and work with the customers in any way we can. Additionally, if there are customers who are having some difficulties making payments, because as you say, you know, not everybody's income is as regular as water and sewer bills are, you know, we will work with them and create a payment schedule for them. So that way, they can, you know, they'll be able to make payments, you know, not just once every two months, but maybe once a month to cover their bill. Or if we need to carry them for a couple of months after the bill is due, we will do that. And we will not charge an interest rate to them. So, I mean, we work very hard to have our customers be able to make the payments.
Yeah. And then Stuart, you know, on one of the charts, right, it just showed the deficit spending, right? And now we're at 1.2 million. And can you just talk about, like, where that money's coming from? And like, you know, sure, 8%, that was one of the options, right? Trying to keep up with inflation, but that doesn't keep up with the costs, right? That's just inflation. And those two things are different. So if you can just kind of dive in a little bit.
Sure. We have been very fortunate in our town over the past few years to have growth over at Sewer Point. And with the growth in Sewer Point, they've had to do connection fees. So we've been using connection fees, which are one-time revenues, to help assist keeping the rates down. So we've thought about raising rates and I'll, you know, we probably should have looked at raising rates in about 2017, 2018. However, that was during the Great Recession. And that did not seem like an appropriate time to raise rates. You know, then two years later, after that, we hit the COVID issue. And so we're just now getting out of the, out of COVID issues. So, I mean, we, this has been an issue that has been on staff's radar for a while. We just start talking about, you know, the timing has been poor from everything else that's been going on. And I understand, you know, with the inflation that's going at this point in time, it is hard, it is still a hard choice. However, the one-time revenues are not there to help us cover the costs. And in the staff report, one of the things that I did mention, that, you know, we are ending up with the rates where they need to end up. And if we had been raising rates all along on a very steady basis, that, you know, probably people may have wanted us to do. By not doing that, we have saved the average customer who uses 10 units of water a month. We've saved them approximately $5,000 over the last 10 years. So that's what we've been, you know, to some extent, what we've been subsidizing our residents by using one-time revenues that have been available to us.
Okay, so what, tell me if I got this right. So what you're saying is that in the, over the past five years, we've, we've helped out folks. But now moving forward, we're all going to have to tighten our belt and spend more for sewer rates?
Correct. I mean, the challenge is, is that, you know, the major development over at Sewer Point is mostly done. We're not really getting, we're not going to get the connection fees like we got with the large campuses that got built there recently. So therefore, we won't have the one-time revenues. And as Catherine shows, you know, we're going to start running into, we're running into deficits. We'll start, you know, we'll start eating all the way through our reserves. And that's not something that's a good move for the city council and for the community. Additionally, you know, the other issue that we faced when we did our last capital charge, when we did our capital charge five years ago, we sold a bond to pay for the capital projects this year because we don't have the coverage to be able to sell another bond. We're going to use reserves to do our capital projects for these projects. And we are going to be paying ourselves back over the next 20 years with the capital charge. So, I mean, there's, it's just a moment in time where we do, you know, everything has caught up to us. And as staff, we've done everything we can to soften the blow during, you know, particularly bad financial times. And I understand the financial times are not the best, but they are better than they were in 2018. They're better than they were at the beginning of COVID.
Sure. Okay, Stuart, thank you. And then Catherine, just if this is something that you can provide, I don't know about for tonight, but perhaps at the next meeting that we have on this matter, you know, having a graph that shows all the costs for all the cities that are in San Mateo County that you've compared this to. So where you got the water, you got the sewer, and you got the capital gains, I mean, the capital charges, sorry. Because I know that you had that chart just for us, but.
Yeah, it's, yeah, so you want a survey, like a combined?
Yes, a survey, combined, yes. Because, you know, like on this, like, oh, so, yeah, like this one here, but just.
Yeah, for, okay, yeah.
Yeah, right. Because when you look at the water, you know, some cities are much higher than us for water.
Yeah.
And then in sewer, we're higher than them. And so, but to the end user, they just pay one bill. They got a water bill that's got water use and sewer. And so that would, I think, be helpful because then it gives us an understanding of where we are across the county.
Okay.
And that's all I have. Thank you.
I think when Catherine brings that back to you, one of the challenges she's going to face is there's a number of cities that pay Cal Water for their water, and a number of cities pay the city or a joint agency for their sewer. So, I mean, it'll just be a challenge that Catherine will be facing when she does that. But just recognize that there are a number, there are a number of people, like South San Francisco, for instance, pays Cal Water for their water. And I believe they pay South San Francisco for their sewer charge. And then you have other cities that put their sewer charge on their property tax bill. So the challenge, the subcommittee talked through that. And the challenge about putting on your property tax bill is now you're making, where we charge you six times a year, and we split it over a six-time payment. When you put on your property tax bill, now you have to make it, you're paying it over a two-time payment. So your cost in that moment in time is more expensive than it would be if you had to do it over six times, six times a year. So I, you know, I understand what you're looking for, Councilmember, and I just know that, you know, it will be a little bit more difficult than just adding two things together.
Got it. All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right. Do your best, Catherine.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember O'Connell?
It's painful, but it's true. And I don't think there's anything else that we can try to change about the truth on what the rates are going to have to be. So no questions.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Just a quick comment that, yes, as painful as this all is, trying to show the end user, the customers, that, you know, these charges aiming to us is doubling for our sewer. And if there's a reason why, at least, might lessen the pain somewhat, not sure, but if we can just make that effort, that would be great, I think.
I would just make a comment, and we're kind of, we're digressing into discussion rather than questions, but I'm going to dovetail off of it anyway. It's just that I hear from residents who are upset that the sewer costs more than the water, but it does cost us more than the water. And our rates have to reflect that. So it's not the city that is setting the rate we're charged for solid waste treatment. And that really comes from San Francisco. We have to just accordingly. City Clerk, do we have any public comments or questions?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Any further council discussion? It kind of sounds like we went from questions into discussion. Otherwise, I would entertain a first and second to direct staff to begin the 218 process to increase rates.
So moved?
And the second?
Second.
So that was motion Davis, second O'Connell. We'll call both, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Thank you, Stuart. Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate it. We'll see you again soon, I'm sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is item P, consider the adoption of a resolution adopting the county of San Mateo's certification of votes and declaring results to fill two four-year term council seats at the general municipal election held on November 8, 2022. Staff report, please.
Madam Mayor, it is being recommended to adopt a resolution adopting the county of San Mateo's certification of votes and declaring results of the general municipal election held on November 8, 2022 to fill two council seats. On June 16, 2022, the city council adopted a resolution calling a general municipal election to be held on Tuesday, November 8, 2022, and adopting procedures pertaining to the conduct and administration of such election, including requesting the San Mateo County Clerk Recorder to provide specified election services. Resolution number 22-48 called for an election to fill two city council member seats for a term of four years. The attached resolution declares the results of the election that was held on November 8, 2022. Madison Davis and Terry O'Connell were re-elected to serve in the city council through December 2026.
Any council questions for staff? Seeing none. Do we have any public comments, City Clerk?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, any council discussion? Seeing none. Can I get a first and second to adopt the resolution adopting the county of San Mateo's certification of votes and declaring results to fill two four-year term council seats at the general municipal election held on November 8, 2022? So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay, motion Cunningham, second Lentz. We'll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lentz?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Next item, administration of oath of office. Who are now elected council members, we will now administer the oath of office for Councilmember Davis and Councilmember O'Connell.
It's on the.
In all my years of service, I've never done this. This is brand new.
Woo-hoo.
This is exciting. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
I.
I, Terry O'Connell.
Madison Davis.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend.
Solemnly affirm that I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Stuart.
Thank you very much.
Give them a chance to get seated again. Congratulations, Councilmember Davis and Councilmember O'Connell. Moving on to our next item on the agenda. Item B, election of new mayor and mayor pro temp. And as we announced at the beginning, any comments related? Comments from the public would like to make, we'll take at this time. Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have Nancy Luxamana.
All right.
Congratulations, council members, newly elected council members. I'm here because you're not honoring your responsibility to be fair in your consideration of the resolution of 2019 and its sole purpose of rotation among council members. I have voted in the past for all the council members currently on the dais and at home. I'm extremely disappointed in how this is being considered and the clear collusion among members against Councilmember Lentz. It has become a really bad view for the public of this council. You know it, I know it, the community knows it. Where and why did this happen? I attended the meeting in November. I heard your discussion. I know it was not recorded, but it was a public meeting, and it was insulting. I want to make sure that the public knows that both Councilmember Cunningham and Councilmember Mackin benefited on being mayor due to that resolution of 2019. Councilmember Lentz accepted Cunningham, excuse me, Councilmember Cunningham's request to skip the rotation, which allows a council member to be the mayor during their first term. Councilmember Mackin, by her own admission, was nominated last year only because, only because Councilmember Lentz was being passed over. This cannot continue, and this is why I am angry, and many people in the community are very angry. It is correct, you are being called out. You can make innuendos all you want, but they have no merit compared to what each and every one of you has done in your tenure. Yes, it is correct to be mayor. It is a privilege and not a right. Councilmember Lentz is the senior tenured member of this council. He knows that better than any of you because he was mayor in 2019 at the time the resolution was written and put on record. He was following his oath to be fair and representative of all the people, regardless of who voted for them. He respects that it is a privilege and not, is not a right. It was meant for all of you to benefit and follow that rotation within your own considerations. And yet, you have used your privilege to completely snub the community in their expectation of your responsibility. I respect, respectfully ask you as a resident to follow the rotation to mayor and consider Councilman Lentz for mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
City clerk, is there anyone else wishing to speak?
We have Mia Christie?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and city council members. It's so great to be with you in person. When James and I moved here, I'm, I'm Mia Christie. I'm a resident on Monterey Street. When James and I moved here in 2016, we went to the Pancake Breakfast at the Mission Blue Native Plant Nursery. James recognized Cliff and said to me, "That's the mayor." We felt a little shy and went up to him and his family to introduce ourselves. We were impressed with how personable and welcoming he was. Over time, I have learned that Cliff has been on city councils that negotiated for community benefits for our town. And I could see that in the time he served on the council, the city has made some wide, wise choices about commercial development that result in tax revenue for our town, which is why we have so many great resources. When canvassing, Cliff goes door-to-door, connecting with as many people in town as possible, informing them, even those who disagree with his ideas. I've never noticed the other city council members doing that. He's a hard worker and a savvy businessman who has made moves to ensure Brisbane has local control over what happens here. Until recently, I hadn't realized that he's not been mayor since 2016, probably because he's already such a leader in town without that title. I heard that even though he's been the mayor pro temp for the last two years, mayor pro temp is traditionally the next city council member in line to be mayor, the city council has plans to not have him be, be mayor in the new year. I've been wondering what's motivating that. From what I can tell, Cliff stays true to his perspective and doesn't waffle from it or out of it, out of fear of the other city council members retaliating. Maybe this is why they don't want him to be mayor. Appointing Cliff as mayor would honor his hard work and service for our community, but he doesn't need the title because the town sees what he contributes. I do think not appointing him as mayor sends a negative message to the town. It says that if you have a different point of view, you will be excluded. And I've been disappointed that it appears the other city council members tend to agree and go along with each other. I expected that the council would be a group of individuals who bring unique perspectives that represent the diversity of our town. And what I'm finding is that the city council members are not challenging each other. I realize this is politics, but I would hope that those elected would be aiming to impress the citizens of our town rather than each other.
Thank you.
City clerk, do we have another speaker?
James Christie?
Madam Mayor and the city council. Yeah, I want, want to address, address this issue. It has been a tradition in our town that we rotate the mayorship so that every five years, a different member of the council serves as mayor. And that is also an assurance that those elected within their first term get to serve as mayor. And this tradition was something that impressed me when I moved to our town in 2016. I thought it was classy, and it also encouraged collegial work between the council so that the mayorship was never turned into a political weapon. And I'm very concerned that that is what appears to be occurring in our town right now, where the mayorship has been turned into a political weapon. I'm also very concerned about what I see as the current culture on our council. As many of you know, I am a spiritual authority figure. I am a priest, and I counsel the dying and the grief-stricken. And I often give spiritual advice. I often counsel people when they're at the end of their life or when they're about to lose a loved one about the power and the importance of forgiveness. I am very, very concerned that this is not being practiced by this current council and that because of grudges, our council is not effectively operating. And so, my advice to each of you is to practice forgiveness. Whatever each of you have done to result in this, let it go and forgive one another. The work you do on our city is too important, and grudges take up energy and time, which you can be devoted to making our town a better place and keeping that rail yard off of the baylands. Our city needs you. Please step up and extend an olive branch and allow Cliff to serve and restore that tradition where each of you get a chance to be mayor. And each of you, all five of you, work together as colleagues. Thank you very much for listening.
City clerk, do we have another member of the public?
We have Los, L-O-S.
Go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Duffy. I'm a current resident in Brisbane. And I want to voice my support for Councilmember Cliff Lentz as mayor. Councilmember Lentz has, from my perspective, been a responsible, thorough, objective council member who listens to unity and represents very well. If it is indeed Councilmember Lentz's turn in the rotation to be mayor, I strongly support that he serves as mayor. If there's a reason why Councilmember Lentz will not hold his place in the rotation as mayor, the citizens of Brisbane, especially those who voted for Councilmember Lentz, should be informed of the reason why. I'm concerned that council members are not being transparent, objective, or have the best interests of the community by disrupting the rotation. Again, I'd like to state my faith in Councilmember Lentz for his leadership as mayor, and I hope that he will have the opportunity to serve in his place on the rotation. Thank you very much.
City clerk, do we have another speaker?
We have Michelle Salmon.
Go ahead.
Honorable mayor and city council and citizens of Brisbane, I want to know how many years does it take to become a tradition? Because from our very first incorporation, it has been the city council, the elected sitting, city council's decision on who will serve as mayor. Our very first city council, of which my father served on, as well as Clark's father served on, chose not to make Clark's father Ernie Conway mayor because he had a temper. And, and the other council members did not feel confident in him running a meeting or not losing his temper with the county. And that's a tradition that's been going on since the 60s. And the idea of the rotation came about because a couple of council members in the past got passed over for mayor because they, they really, the other council members did not trust that they could lead the, not only the city, but the council. And so, this idea that this is suddenly a tradition and you get a right to have your turn, and this isn't grade school. This isn't grade school. This is the running of the city of, of Brisbane that's at stake here. And I believe that the, for other serving councils, I trust in them. I trust in our council to, to make the right decision. And this is why this, this document, this resolution that Cliff pushed into place when he was mayor to assure that everybody got their turn, isn't written that way. Why it's written is it's a privilege and not a right, and whenever, whenever, whenever. Because at the, the end of the day, what's more important to you? Tradition or trust? To me, trust is more important. And every single member of the council has to trust the person that they elect as mayor to accurately represent them and to not, um... They have to have a good reason. And, and I don't know what the reason is because if, if it was something that they could talk about, they would. But I trust the four other council members to make the right decision. It is really up to the council. And I, I, I'll take trust over tradition any day and honesty and, and integrity. And I think that there's been a lot of rumor and innuendo and a lot of other things. And I'm sorry, we have five people who are elected to the council. The council chooses who is mayor regardless of any kind of gentleman's agreement, as it used to be called, or any kind of, oh, well, let's have, everybody have a turn at, at being mayor. You know, is it worth risking the future of the city so that someone has their turn? I don't think so. So, sorry to be so blunt about it, but trust over tradition. Thank you, and thank you all for your service.
City clerk, do we have another member of the public wishing to speak?
I see... I see Tony Varios with his hands up.
Tony, go ahead. Oh, Tony, there you go.
I got it. I couldn't see the mute, but, sorry.
We'd let you know.
Thank you very much. Good to see you all. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year to all of you. Hope everybody's well. As far as this issue with selecting the mayor's concern, I don't know if you've finished that or not, but if you haven't, whether you have or not, I read the posting from 2016, and it said, if I recall correctly, it said, wherever possible, implement this procedure. It said, let a new council, newly elected councilperson serve within their first term. And then it said, elect the mayor pro temp as the next mayor whenever possible. So that would suggest that something impossible must have happened. And that's all I can say. Thank you.
City clerk, do we have a number, another member of the public wishing to speak?
We have a comment from Julia Adler. Given the active discussion in the residents of Brisbane Facebook page, are there more opportunities for discussion in an open forum, a town hall perhaps?
Do we have another, anyone on the Zoom meeting or physically present that wishes to speak?
I did want to note for the record that we, the council received correspondence from James Oshay, Oshay regarding the mayor rotation. And there are no, I don't see any further raised hands or comments, Madam Mayor. Oops. I think Tony Varios raised his hand again. I'm not sure if that was a mistake or...
No, that was no mistake. Thank you. I'd like to say one other comment is that there, there was a, a comment just made that electing any of our five council members could possibly place the city in some kind, city's future in some kind of jeopardy. I don't believe that any of the five council members would do that. And so, that comment makes no sense to me at all. Thank you.
Okay. City clerk, anyone else?
None, Madam Mayor.
Okay. I think we could also take some council member comments if they wish to make comments. I, I think it would be perhaps appropriate at this time. We've had two issues brought up. Number one is the actual resolution. I'd like to defer to our city attorney. Could you please explain Resolution 2016-06 about the guidelines for selection of the mayor and mayor pro temp, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, Madam Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes.
The resolution was adopted in 2016. It was the sixth resolution of the year. It is a guideline that was adopted after a proposal was made, as I understand it from the record, to have an ordinance adopted, an ordinance that would direct the process for who would be mayor next, would be in the law and have the force of law. The council rejected that at that time. There was some sort of back and forth. I can't tell what that was. But the result was this resolution that is a guideline that, in these circumstances, as have been described, this person in their first term shall become mayor, unnamed person, just a first-term councilmember. The mayor pro tem shall become mayor presumptively whenever possible. But all of this is below the guidance given to the council. So the guidance given to the council is it's not a privilege and it's not a right. I know that that is, this writing is a classic example of why people hate lawyers, because it's somewhat inconsistent. But I think that it's inconsistent probably because the effort to pass an ordinance failed, and this was a compromise. So it's guidance that does not have the force of law. It's up to the council to interpret it as it wishes.
Okay. Thank you. Second item I would, I think would be appropriate at this point in time. Having seen recent discussions on social media, the comments tonight, there are a lot of references to reasons behind council decisions. I've read many things on social media, and I understood the public's quest for some sort of an answer. And a lot of this for our council right now comes down to closed-session items that were discussed. Could our city attorney please explain to everyone what the guidelines are for the council with regard to discussing conversations held during those closed-session meetings?
Forgive me, everyone. I'm going to be a little bit obtuse again because I don't have a choice. I cannot get into what was discussed in closed session. Under California law, and I want to stress this because a question was raised with me multiple times today by... There was some misunderstanding, but it clearly made its way around. This is not, this isn't discretion. It's in the law. The Supreme Court of the state has determined it. Appellate courts have since determined it, and it's in the government. What goes on in closed session, properly called, is confidential. If somebody breaches the confidentiality of that closed session and they are a member of the elected body, one option, the recommended option in the law is to refer them to a grand jury. That's how serious this is taken. Now, that said, if there's a breach, rarely is somebody referred to the grand jury. So the confidentiality of closed sessions is taken very, very seriously. The issue that came up here involved a matter that was being heard in closed session. It was discussed in closed session. This issue had come up. It was addressed in closed session, as well it should have been because it related directly to what the closed session was about. And it would have hurt the city's interests to have it discussed outside of closed session. It dealt directly with settlement and avoiding losses. So it was addressed by the council. It remains confidential on orders or direction, orders, on direction of the city attorney. I've asked other people what they would have done in this situation. I have yet to find anybody who disagrees, who's practiced law for a long time. So I'm sorry that the town cannot know more about this. The unique facts of this, put it in closed session, and it belonged in closed session. Closed session is confidential. It's inviolate. Our own Supreme Court says that. And I nor anybody else can get into what was discussed. I'm sorry.
I think I would just add to that with looking at what's been posted on social media. I really didn't see anything, even in speculation on social media, that actually addresses what took place in our closed session. So we've seen rampant speculation, but I can assure you that nothing has touched upon any fact of what actually transpired in closed session. So that being said, do we have any councilmembers who would like to make statements?
I have questions for staff.
Go ahead.
Would the city attorney be able to, for the public's sake, give a description of the duties and authority bestowed to the mayor?
That's out of the blue. It's mostly a ceremonial position. You do preside over various functions for the city. You exercise discretion, as the mayor has denied, about the length of time that people may address a topic during session. You also can determine agenda items and how they're heard and whether they're heard. But other than that, it's very, very limited. So it's mostly ceremonial, with the exception of a few things I've named. Clay, if I've missed something, please correct me, but I think that's relatively fair.
Yeah, the only thing I would add...
I can't hear you.
Okay. Is that the mayor works with the city manager in terms of the adoption of an agenda to present to the city council at your formal meetings. That, I think, can be over-read and overstated. Obviously, there's a lot of things that come through the city that frankly neither the city manager nor the mayor have the ability to keep coming forward to the city council. So it's a very much nuanced sort of role for the mayor. And the mayor and the city manager work on maybe the order of things that may appear on a council agenda more to the point than the items that are going to come forward. And so that's the only other thing I would add to what you said, Tom.
Can you speak to, if you're aware, to pass deviations from an anticipated rotation in Brisbane, as well as in San Mateo County, in recent history?
As I recall, in Brisbane, there have been two other times in which the rotation of the mayor pro tem did not take place. And the council chose to not appoint that person that year. I believe in one of those cases, that person was then appointed the following year. And in the other case, the councilperson actually left the council not too long thereafter.
In the instance in which the councilmember left, not there long after, was Councilmember Lentz a member of that council at that time?
I believe so, yes.
Are you aware of any deviations from an anticipated rotation in San Mateo County?
Well, I couldn't name them off the top of my head. It has happened, I believe, from time to time in different cities. I believe Millbrae comes to mind, but I believe it's happened in other cities also.
Those are all my questions for staff. Thank you.
Councilmember Cunningham, you have any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I did write a statement about my feelings about this. I don't know if this is the appropriate time to read that statement.
If you'd like, go ahead.
I had it pulled up. No, I lost it. Give me a second, please. I'll read this verbatim. "This is very hard, by the way. This does not come easy. This has been a very, very difficult time for all of us. But I want you all to hear my perspective on the appointment of our new mayor as allowed by local and state law. As other city councilmembers have had an opportunity to speak their mind on this topic via their own support network for many weeks now. When I was running for city council, I was given one piece of very sage advice from former mayor Clark Conway. He said quite succinctly, 'Do not get married to your own ideas. There are five people on the city council, and five people get to make all the decisions, all with equal say.' I've taken that advice, and it has served me well these many years. That being said, although it is true that our city council appears in public to work really well together, and for the most part, we do. But we cannot have any one councilmember making council agreements in closed sessions, and then not adhering to those commitments. No one should misrepresent their authority unless it is bestowed upon them by the entire city council. The real difficulty of careless behavior is that it can jeopardize council negotiations and lead to litigation. So with my own personal integrity in mind and the integrity of the entire city council, and due to the serious breaches of trust, I make my choice for our next mayor. Our mayor needs to be a team player and never a solo act. I cannot, in good conscience, appoint our current mayor pro tem as we have serious breaches of trust that could have very serious implications for the integrity of Brisbane moving forward. Thank you."
Councilmember Lentz?
Tom, we recently spoke a few nights ago, and I asked you, could I speak about items that were not in closed session, but prior to closed session? And you indicated that I could do that. Is that still true tonight?
As long as you don't get into what was discussed and the reasons it was discussed in closed session, yeah, anybody's free to talk about it.
Not a problem, okay. And then, you know, you've attended some of the public meetings. Not very many public members attended, but there were two at the team-building workshop. We did talk about the issue. You didn't seem to feel like that was out of bounds, and you allowed the discussion to occur. So anything that was discussed during that team-building session that's appropriate in your mind?
As you're aware, Councilmember Lentz, your recollection of what was discussed in that meeting does not match my recollection of what was discussed in that meeting. And it wasn't taped.
Yeah.
It's the facts. That's fine. But...
And we wouldn't talk about what was involved in the closed session. And that's never been discussed. What was discussed, what happened prior to the closed session? And so I just, you know, I just want to make clear that when I speak tonight, it's about what happened prior to the closed session, not what was in closed session. And that what happened in closed session, I never spoke about that, you know, outside of what we discussed that evening. Okay, so your mic is off, and so I'm assuming that you're good with what I just said.
You know, anybody on the council, we've all asked you this except one of you. Anybody can discuss the facts as they understood them without getting into... You all know what was discussed in closed session. You know what came up in closed session. You know why it cannot be discussed publicly. And I would just ask all of you, and just please be careful not to get near that. You all know the seriousness of what happened after that closed session and what was involved. You all are quite well aware. So you've all stayed out of that for now, and I would just encourage all of you to continue to stay away from it. We don't need to revisit it. And for the town, you avoided liability. That's what you avoid. I can't go any further, but I would hate to have it reopened by accident.
And I agree. And you have my assurances that I will not do that. So let's talk about the trust. You know, I had written a whole thing here, and I'm just, I'm just going to just come from the heart. You know, what I did was wrong. I'm not going to make any excuses about that. I have a disagreement with the city attorney about, you know, the severity of it because I didn't think that it posed a threat to Brisbane. There was no financial gain for me. In fact, there was no gain. However, that doesn't make it right. But let me tell you what happened prior to that meeting. I shared information with my wife about that meeting. And the reason I did it was because I wanted to get her opinion because she knew the majority of the subject matter. You know, that's what I did. And that's all that I did. You know, this is something I've owned from the very beginning. And I've apologized to my council colleagues numerous times. You know, I was told by a current councilmember that what I did wasn't that bad because they've done it too. But the reason why I was punished was because of what my wife did. So what did she do? You know, prior to the closed-session meeting, I don't know, maybe a week before, my wife attended a two-by-two meeting with councilmembers Mackin and Davis. And during that meeting, the superintendent of Bayshore attended as a guest. Right? It was a Zoom meeting. And because the superintendent was in the audience, it was difficult to have that candid relationship or candid conversation regarding educational opportunities resulting from the Baylands development. And so on her own, she felt compelled to reach out to councilmember Davis and Mackin and, you know, to share her opinion that the two school districts should work out their differences. And that's what she did. You know, my wife, she cares very deeply about the Brisbane Elementary School District and her role on the school board. You know, her intent was and will always be to fight for the kids of the Brisbane School District. Look, you know, the city council has the authority to choose who's the next mayor. But we did have an agreement. And it was an agreement that you proposed to me, and I agreed to it. I thought you were sincere about it. And then that should have meaning. You know, the resolutions that we pass should also have meaning. I know that the city attorney, you know, read off those whereas, right? But why did we do it? Why did we create that resolution? Right? It says right here, "The council wishes to set guidelines for the selection of mayor and mayor pro tem, so that potential conflicts concerning who is selected as mayor and mayor pro tem may be avoided." And yes, it does state that the mayor pro tem shall be selected to serve as the next mayor. And it also says that it's a privilege, not a right. And in 2016, the three of us, we were on the council den, and our names are on that resolution. And the reason we put that language in there was to provide an exit ramp for the council in case we had a rogue or, you know, abusive councilmember. You know, it gave us a way to say, no, that person should not be on the council. But it was never intended to be used, you know, so the majority of the council... But it was never intended to be used, you know, so the majority of the council could exclude one of its own. You know, three years ago, you know, I walked into one of those, you know, council meetings and workshops where we chose the next mayor or mayor pro temp. And in that meeting was the city attorney. And it was the first time that I'd ever been to one of those meetings where the city attorney was there. And in front of him was this resolution. And Karen, you know, you had wanted to be the mayor in your first term, and which meant leapfrogging over me. And yeah, originally I was like, I wasn't happy about that. But we went to this, this resolution that had my signature on it. It was like, okay, you know what? Shut up, Cliff. This, this is important, this is what's here. And, and so I agreed to it. And, and I was the one in the formal meeting that said, hey, I think council member Cunningham should be the next mayor pro temp. And then after that workshop, you came up to me, Terry, and thanked me for doing that. You know, we're all intertwined, right? We've, we all drummed up the courage to, to run for a seat on the city council. And, you know, thanks to our lucky stars, I know that we all feel this, that we, we won the trust of our community and, and that we've been able to serve. I've enjoyed working with all of you. I'll admit, it has not always been a smooth road, and we've had our differences, but that's what the public expects. They want us to come in with different perspectives, and they want us to be fair. And, and, and I get it, you know, trust is very, very important. And I, and I feel really bad about what I did. It was a lapse of judgment. Nothing I can do about it, but it happened a year and a half ago. Are there other items that are out there that you feel that I haven't performed my duties to the best of what a city council member should do? You know, I, I hope that you can share that tonight if that's the case. Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's all I have to say.
You know, I'm not even sure where to take this. What has happened in the last month has been very disarming, and to have the public believe that there is a hidden agenda and we're working behind closed doors and to allude to all these things has been really difficult to watch and sit back and watch and not be able to comment on social media because we're not allowed to, because that's a serial meeting and that's a violation of the Brown Act. And so that gets very difficult when you're seeing this. But I have never made a decision that I don't stand behind and that I don't do what I feel is best for Brisbane. And I will try to never make a decision for what is not best for Brisbane, and I hope that the public knows that. And it wasn't just the one laps that I've seen, but I'm not going to drag anybody through the mud. And this isn't the place for dragging through the mud. But I will stay true to my heart and always do the right thing for Brisbane in every decision I make. And that's my only comments.
I had no intention tonight of getting into the details of why I have not chosen to vote for Councilmember Lentz for mayor. However, after a slew of misinformation has made its way onto Facebook, I feel compelled to set the record straight. There was a major breach of trust between Councilmember Lentz and the council, which was addressed in closed session, and it's the reason I cannot support Cliff for mayor. Legally, I am prohibited from saying more. The version of events that Cliff has stated tonight is more complexed and nuanced than he has described. In addition, I don't think a detailed report of Cliff's mistakes is appropriate or respectful to him, and doing so would likely damage our relationship further. Not appointing Cliff has nothing to do with disagreements on agenda items. I believe that a difference of opinion is critical to the health of the city, and my colleagues and I consistently express different points of view. I have never attempted to punish another council member for disagreeing with me. While I cannot support Cliff for mayor this year, I wholeheartedly appreciate the work he has done on the council. I look forward to continuing to work with him and have no personal issues with him. He is my teammate, and I hope that we can move forward as allies, united against the many pressures we face right now and will face in the future. From my very first oath in 2015, I made a commitment to always act in the best interest of the city of Brisbane, and I take that promise seriously. I have always and always will continue to do what I believe is fundamentally right for our city, even if that choice is in conflict with what is best for me personally or one of my colleagues. Even when that choice might cost me my relationships or make me unpopular, I know many people are disappointed and they want answers, and I don't blame you. I thank you for taking the time to express your concerns this evening.
Madam Mayor, unless you have comments, I'd like to have a rebuttal, if that's okay? But, but I'm sorry, why don't you provide your comments?
If you want to go ahead, then I'll, I'll wait for you to finish.
I have nothing to, to hide. You know, I came here tonight hoping that we could work this out, that the council would look at treating each other with fairness and professionalism would be the order of the day. You know, there's a lot of people in, in town that want to know why there's this thing of trust. And I, I don't know if it is trust. I thi- I think it's more about loyalty and being part of this group, and that's just not me. You know, during that team building workshop, you made this comment, Terry, and I, and I think someone else did too, but it just stuck with me. You know, that you made the comment that we have a hostile environment on the council. And, you know, the week before the election, you came up to me, and you wanted to have a meeting, and you were distraught, you didn't like what was being said on social media, and you thought it was unfair, you thought it was baseless, and I, these two thoughts were like, two, two streams of thoughts were running through my mind. And the first was like, well, this person has no clue that she does this to me, which she doesn't like that others are doing. But then on the other side, I really appreciated that you came up to me and that you felt that this was a, an environment that you, that was safe, and that I would be a good listener, and that I would be empathetic to what you had to say. You know, the couns- well, the public, they want us to work together, and I don't think they like, you know, saying things like, well, tonight's not the place to say these things. You know, when we had our team building workshop, it wasn't about team building. It was a dump. All of you just, just said all these negative things about me. There was no kind of like looking within and saying, hey, you know, well, maybe I'm part of this too, right? Your comments are just about, here's Cliff Lentz, who's done these awful things and is not a team player and, you know, has put the city in jeopardy. Those things are not true. And I've served on the council for 13 years. There's a lot of folks in the community that, that don't feel that way. And you know what? If, if there are concrete reasons, I think you should just state them. There's nothing wrong with that.
Did someone want to respond to that, or did I go on?
I, I think that those comments were directed towards me in a conversation that I had about how social media was going during the last election. But I don't think that there is an appropriate response to the, I don't think that there's an appropriate response for me to make to this.
Okay, well, I have some prepared notes, but I think I'm gonna just go all over the map. Really hard when we can't talk about closed session items. And because we can't talk about it, four of us on the council have become the victims of character assassination. I don't take that lightly. So that concern over one council member has been turned on all of us, that we have some nefarious thought, that we are unfair, that we're not understanding, we're not cooperating, we're not working together, we're not trying to promote allegiance. That is all not true. Some of the things I saw on social media just absolutely made me cringe and went, where are people coming up with these things? Because they're not based on fact. Nobody knows what was said in closed session. It was serious. It was very serious. We have made a concerted effort for an entire year to work through this and get things back on track. That takes five people participating to do that. Five people. When I took an oath of office, it wasn't words to me, it was very serious. I thought about each one of the words in that oath of office. I would really like all of the people on social media that were there tonight to think about how easy, very easy it would be to say, let's just go with the rotation, let the chips fall where they may. That would be a political decision if I did that. I won't go there, just to make things easier for me. I won't do that. Why? I'm gonna tell you why. I took an oath of office to protect and defend Brisbane to the best of my ability. And I am still the mayor right now. I will tell you, it is largely a ceremonial position, but I will also remind you that in a lot of cities, large cities, mayors are elected, and there is a certain authoritarian perception that people have about the mayor, even if you, you have a city where the mayor's rotated. So it's very important who becomes mayor. Why? People approach you, it opens doors, people listen to you. So that title comes with a certain responsibility to behave judiciously with all the trappings that come with that, and make sure that you are not misleading, that you represent the entire council. Because honestly, I'm the mayor, I'm just another council member. That requires responsibility for your actions and restraint. Because unless all five members of that council say, we bestow this authority on you to represent us in this one item or this one action or this one meeting, you do not have that authority. That is a very important responsibility. I will also say, I must address, I was one of the recipients of Councilmember Lentz's wife's phone call. The statement of facts is not accurate. I'm sorry, but I have to...
Okay, then maybe you should, you know, if you say it's not accurate and it happened outside of the meeting, then why don't you state what she said?
I cannot discuss it because it was discussed in closed session. I would love to. I cannot discuss it because I am bound by closed session.
Is that, is that an accurate statement, Tom? That she cannot say what my wife said to her because it was, you know...
I'm not gonna continue to, the mayor can exercise her own judgment. This is a very slippery slope, and I, I will say, I can understand why the mayor doesn't want to get into it further. The matter was raised, it was addressed, it's behind us. I understand it's had an unexpected impact, but it's, the last thing we want to do is reopen that matter.
So I will just say this. I heard a lot of discussion about transparency. No one wants transparency more than I do. If I could talk about closed session, I don't think any of you would have questions anymore. But I think it's also important that we remember, the business of the council is not just one person's views or any one faction. You need to understand as a council member that any one of your individual, individual actions can really impact the entire city, the entire council, a big responsibility. And that transparency is really important too, that all voices are heard and that they have a chance to have input. And that requires the council to operate as a body of five members making decisions as they were elected to do collectively. And as council members, I've heard all about whether, whether we get along or don't get along. A lot of times, we, we just have to agree to disagree, but live with the results of those deliberations. The mayor appointed by the council should be willing to abide by those principles. And in my selection of the council member who should be mayor, I'll vote for a person who's demonstrated that they can honor that commitment to abide and uphold those principles, because that's what we need for the best outcome for Brisbane. And I will not make a political decision to just go with a rotation when I feel it's contrary to the best interests of Brisbane right now. I will not do that. I have integrity, I think our council needs integrity, and we have to show that. I will not make a political decision. Would anyone else like to speak?
You know, I just wanted to say thank you to the people that spoke tonight on my behalf, folks out in the community who have supported...
Folks out in the community who have supported me, not just with this issue, but just over the years. And it, it's meant a lot to me. And you know, in the end, you know, I'm elected to serve you. I'm accountable to the public. I'm not accountable to my council colleagues. I work really diligently to be the best council member with them. And I will continue to do that. There's been, you know, some moments and that we've had against, you know, you know, amongst each other. But every time I come to the dais, I'm ready to do my job and, and work with them. And you know, I'm gonna continue to do the same because I owe it to all of you. And so I just want to thank Brisbane Public for that.
Councilmember Cunningham, you have a hand up?
I do. I, I, look, I, I just want to make it very clear. This, this sounds to me right now like this is about one incident. I want to assure everybody in our general public that this was a very serious incident, but this was not the only incident, or we maybe could have gotten past it. The trust that was broken has come over a long period of time and it is not about one incident. I want everyone to make sure they understand that.
You know, so, okay, I'm sorry. I would like to make a motion to nominate Madison Davis for mayor.
Okay, you know, I, I just want to respond to that comment because that was, that was an attack. And that is something that this community does not like. And, you know, again, you're directing it at me, Karen. I'll take it. When you direct it towards members of the public, that's wrong. And to say things that there's these other things, but we can't tell you about it. Right? That's like Trumpism. And that's not healthy for our community. And again, you, you, you know, if you, you state these things, put it out there, right? And don't say that, that all these issues that we can't talk about is because they happen in closed session. Besides that one incident, there isn't anything else. And, and, you know, I'll, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll take you, you know, to, to question on any of those things that you might bring up. The reason that you guys don't want to bring them up is because, you know, they're tied to you as well. None of us are immune. All of us make mistakes. And many times the things that we do is because we, in some weird sense, we do care about the community. And, but we think like, okay, we need to do this because it'll help our community. That was part of my thinking and I know some of the things that you all have done as well. None of you are perfect. You know, this thing that you're talking about trust, about sharing this information with someone else about a closed session meeting, the person you're gonna nominate has told me that they've done it multiple times. But somehow that's okay. You know, there's a double standard here and I just don't think it's right.
This is gonna devolve into a he said, she said, which is gonna be all hearsay. So I'm not even, this is just gonna get ugly and nasty. That's not in the best interest of our community. And I'm not gonna do that. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say, hey, you said this and you did that and you, it, it, that's just, we need to figure out how to move forward as a body. We need to figure out how to come together. We're gonna be facing BDI, we're gonna be facing Orchard Partners and we're facing the state right now. For us to have this ugly, you did this and you did that and you did this, what, what is that accomplishing? If someone would like to know why I'm not voting for you as mayor and they, they would like more clarity beyond the information I've already given, my number is 415-706-5276. Please call me. I would be happy to discuss with you anything you want to talk about related to city, city of Brisbane business.
You know, being on the dais and talking, that's transparency. You know, so that's the thing, right? Here's someone who says this goes beyond that one incident and just lays out, there's multiple incidents of how I violated the trust. And then the next, the next, you know, thing is, you know, Terry's making a motion, right? That's the last thing that people want to hear, right? Or, or that, that, that would hear. You know, bullies, you know, they consider themselves the victims, right? And that's, you know, you, you're right. We should not delve deeper into this because in the end, we do have to work together. And, but, you know, when you state things about what other, what I've done and there's no, there's no like reflection of yourselves, it makes it appear that just one council member is doing all the wrong things and that all of you are the upstanding, you know, city council members. And, and that's, that, that's not right. And that's the thing.
I have a motion on the floor.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
No.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Can I get a motion to elect, or I, I need a motion for Mayor Protem?
I'll make a motion to appoint Councilmember O'Connell to be Mayor Protem.
I'll second that. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
No.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Mackin?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is administration of office of newly elected mayor and Mayor Protem. That's newly elected Mayor Davis and Mayor Protem O'Connell.
We'll see if I can do this as well as Stewart did.
I'm sure you will.
Pressure's on. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Madison Davis.
Do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend
That I solemnly affirm that I will support and defend
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of invasion.
Without any mental
Without any mental
Reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
I promise, we're almost at break time. I now like to recognize outgoing Mayor Colleen Mackin for her service. I will start by reading a proclamation of the City of Brisbane. A proclamation of the City Council of the City of Brisbane recognizing Mayor Colleen Mackin for her service to the City of Brisbane from 2021 to 2022. Whereas, Colleen Mackin served as the mayor of the City of Brisbane from December 9th, 2021 to December 15th, 2022. And whereas, during her year as mayor, she effortlessly and efficiently presided over city council meetings, workshops and public events to better inform the public of important city issues and engagement opportunities. And whereas, in her tenure as mayor, she hosted important citywide events, marking important milestones. She presided over the restoration of the mural at Midtown Market, the installation of Michelle Guttlove's kaleidoscope exhibit of glass at Mission Blue, with butterflies at the New Brisbane Library, the announcement of Volunteer of the Year at Day in the Park, the youth poetry workshop held during United Against Hate Week, and the tree lighting ceremony at the Festival of Lights. And whereas, her passion for the environment, safe neighborhoods, responsible government and community engagement was reflected in her dedicated work on the implementation of key capital improvement projects for the City of Brisbane, such as repaving of Sierra Point Parkway where over 2,000 tires were recycled, thus diverting their presence from a landfill. She also actively worked on numerous county assignments and council subcommittees, including the Association of Bay Area Governments, the League of California Cities, Peninsula Clean Energy, the Infrastructure Utilities and Franchise Subcommittee, Planning Issue Subcommittee, and many more. And whereas, she was the leading voice of encouragement for Brisbane community members to get involved in their communities. Watch city council meetings, serve on commissions and committees, write to city council, participate in the democratic process as much as possible, and empower residents to take action and alter the course of growing intolerance. And whereas, during her tenure as mayor, she championed environmentally sustainable practices and initiatives. She kept the council and community informed on the many initiatives and projects Peninsula Clean Energy was embarking on to generate emission-free power and sent an open letter to the Biden administration on the city's behalf, encouraging the implementation of a federal climate emergency declaration. And now, therefore it be, therefore be it resolved that after a year of dedicated and passionate service as mayor of the City of Brisbane, we thank her for her dedication in making the City of Brisbane a better place to live and thrive.
Thank you, Mayor Davis, and thank you, residents of Brisbane.
I would like to allow a moment for each council member to say something about Colleen's service if they wish. And I will start with Mayor Protem O'Connell.
I just wanted to say thank you, Colleen. You brought a fresh, crisp attitude to being the mayor. You took it on suddenly and without a lot of experience, but your experience at the planning commission level showed that you were ready for the task. You did a great job on public speaking events and I know you did your homework. And you kept our meetings short, to the point, and on track. So for that, I truly thank you. And we'll look forward to working with you more.
Councilmember Lance, do you wish to say something?
Yeah, thank you, Colleen, for serving as our mayor. I think you did a fine job and, yeah, thanks.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Can I find my own mute button? Thank you, Colleen. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Colleen's, for those of you who don't know, Colleen's attention to detail is unsurpassed in anything I've ever seen. You want to get to the bottom of something, you hand her that piece of paper, even now, and she will get to the bottom of it. So that, that is a, an amazing strength at so many levels. And Colleen managed to pick up on little nuances that the rest of us didn't see. And that is a talent in of itself. She worked incredibly hard. It's been a very, very tough year. We've got the Baylands to deal with, we've got high-speed rail to deal with, and she handled it like a total pro. And guess what? We're working through some big problems moving forward and I'm glad that you're gonna be at the helm. And you always had a great sense of humor. And thank you, thank you for a wonderful year. Really appreciate your help.
I'll wrap it up and then I'll turn it over to, I believe we have a member of the public wishing to speak. I just want to say thank you so much, Colleen, for your service. I don't know how, how, how I'll ever run a meeting as efficiently as you. I feel like you've set the bar for keeping things on track and that's something that I have greatly admired and appreciated about you. I also admire this intense research talent that you have. You're constantly sending me articles of things that other cities across the country and across the world are implementing. And I think that that's, just shows how above and beyond that you go in figuring out ways that we can be, that we can be at the forefront of innovation, in policy, in ideas, in planning. And it has been a joy to see you flourish in your first term. And I have really grown to appreciate your voice on the council. So thank you. And I believe we will, we have a member of the public wishing to speak. And after I hear from all the members of the public, I will turn it back to you for a rebuttal. So I believe we have Michelle Salmon wishing to say something.
Madam Mayor, before, Michelle, I apologize. I don't, is the rule 10:30 for this council? You may have to extend the meeting.
Well, I know we are supposed to break for a reception, so how do we factor, how are we factoring that in?
I think just the council, I, I believe it's, Ingrid, is it 10:30?
Yes, it's 10:30. And you can, you can make a decision on how long you want the
I can make a motion for, to extend the meeting to 11:00.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, wait, no, I have to do roll call. We have to do roll call.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Davis?
Aye. So Michelle Salmon, considering the hour, please make it brief if possible. Ingrid, are you gonna let Michelle? Is her hand raised? Michelle?
I will make, I will make it brief, but Colleen, I just want to thank you so much for your services as mayor. You have such heart and such passion and such integrity. And it shows in everything you do, your support of open space and ecology. It was an inspiration for me to keep pushing forward. And I just really want to thank you for your service.
Is there any other members of the public wishing to speak at this time?
There are none.
Oh, Mitch Bull has his hand raised.
Mitch Bull. Mitch Bull.
Colleen, I just want to thank you for your, your term as mayor. You always go into incredible detail and questions and, and logistics and asking the hard things. But most of all, you really are informative and inquisitive and that really makes for great politics. It's been a pleasure working with you. I hope you continue that.
Okay, I will open it up for Colleen to make a rebuttal.
I would just thank all of you for your kind comments. It's gonna motivate me to try to do even better. I appreciate your patience. In my, my tenure as mayor, I learned a lot. You all made me laugh when things got really hard and that kept me going. I think everybody should be mayor once so that you really have that insight into how our city works because there's a lot there that, that you just don't see otherwise. I do love the detail. I look forward to you I look forward to you keeping the paperwork on, and I will read it all and come back to you with plenty of questions. Thank you from the bottom of my heart. Congratulations, Mayor Davis. I look forward to working with you as well and the rest of the council. And let's go to break and take a breather. Thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, we will take a brief pause for a break.
Madam Mayor, how long do you want? 10 minutes, so 10:50?
Okay, I believe we have our full council back. We will now move to item Y, under which the council will consider adopting the resolution confirming a revised pay schedule for the city manager, approving a related Fourth Amendment to the city manager's employment agreement, and authorizing the mayor to sign the Fourth Amendment. The resolution is in the agenda packet for item Y. The resolution provides three changes to the city manager's employment agreement in accordance with Government Code Section 54953(c)(3). The three changes to the city manager's salary and benefits would be: to increase the city manager's biweekly salary to $11,371.20 as of the first full pay period of January 2023; to extend the city manager's term in office to December 31st, 2023; and to provide that the city manager shall also be credited with 80 hours of administrative leave in July 2023. But such administrative leave must be used by December 31st, 2023, or it will be lost. Okay, would staff like to give a report on this?
It sounded like a pretty thorough report to me, just reading that.
I would agree. So I will move to council questions.
No questions?
Okay. I'm seeing what seems to be no's from everyone. So I will now move to public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Would the council like to have a discussion, or will someone provide a motion?
I'd like to consider to adopt resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the Fourth Amendment to the city manager's employment agreement.
Okay. First from O'Connell, second from Cunningham. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Davis?
Aye. We will now move on to item Z. Item Z calls on the council to consider adopting a resolution updating the city's master pay schedule to reflect the various MOUs that the city council adopted on December 8th, 2022, and the city manager's new hourly rate, given the council's approval of the resolution confirming a revised pay schedule for city manager under item Y. As noted in the agenda report for item Z, state law and regulation, as well as CalPERS guidance, require that the city post a master pay schedule that accurately reflects all of the city's pay schedules in a single document. Given the city council's approval of the MOUs with various employee organizations and amendment to the city manager's employment agreement under item Y, the city council must therefore act to amend the city manager's pay schedule to bring it into conformance with the revised compensation for employees covered by MOUs and with the city manager's revised compensation. So do I have anyone wishing to ask questions on this item? I assume there is no staff report. Okay, I'm seeing no's. Any questions from council? Okay, do I have any members of the public wishing to speak on this item?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I will now move to council discussion, or I will entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, sorry, I just lost my spot, the resolution to amend the master pay schedule.
I'll second that.
Motion made by O'Connell, second by Mackin. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Councilmember Lance?
Aye.
Councilmember Mackin?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
And Mayor Davis?
Aye. So we're now moving to staff reports. Is it okay if we skip the city manager's report on upcoming activities, given the lateness of the hour?
I have no report anyway, so we're all good.
We will now move on to item CC, countywide assignments and subcommittee reports. It might be great if we could just withhold this until the next meeting?
You know, just real brief, Councilmember Mackin and I had an infrastructure meeting, talked about impact fees that will raise money for parking and rec endeavors. It's an impact fee setup that other cities do. It has the potential to raise a significant amount of money, over $1 million a year, over the next 20 years, that we can use for a variety of parking rec needs.
Fantastic. I will report that Councilmember Cunningham and I had a public art committee in which we discussed moving forward with working on the Public Art Master Plan, which would involve putting out an RFP, getting a consultant, and engaging in a community feedback process. So that's what the committee will be working on going forward. That's all I have. Does anyone have anything else?
I have one, Madam Mayor. We had a history committee meeting, you and I.
Oh, right, 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 right.
This meeting in a long time. It was to review a draft memorandum of understanding between Brisbane and San Mateo County Library Joint Powers Authority concerning the Brisbane History Collection and the History Room in the new library. Memorandum was vetted, but subcommittee recommendation that it be brought to the full council for review and potential approval.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, we will now move on to item DD, city council schedule. The January 5th city council meeting is canceled. The next city council meeting will be a special meeting to continue remote public meetings. This is proposed to be scheduled on January 12th, 2022, at 5:00 PM via Zoom webinar. Does this work for everyone?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, moving on. Written communications, city clerk. I believe we have a few written communications that have come in.
We have written correspondence from Olga Alexander, Children's First, the Custody Crisis in Brisbane, Sukmani Purwal, the City Selection Committee Meeting Packet, and James O'Shea, mayoral rotation.
Okay, so very quickly, item FF, appointments for City Selection Committee. Tomorrow, there is going to be a meeting in which the City of Brisbane will vote on appointments, and I believe there was an attachment to our agenda listing who is on the ballots for all of those positions. Does anyone feel strongly for one person or another?
I did want to make a comment about, and I'm, do I still have the paperwork here? I think I do. I, do we have someone who's going to that meeting?
Yes, Colleen will be going as far as.
Okay, good. I was hoping that we could support, sorry, my fingers don't work if I don't lick them first. For the Cal ID system, I'd like to support Foster City Vice Mayor John Fruman. I've not met him or talked to him, but I do like the look of his resume and his letter of recommendation, so if.
I'm happy to support that suggestion unless anyone has any other feelings. Okay, anyone else? I will then, if you allow our discretion, Colleen and I will work together on, and I think most of them are reappointments, so we will go ahead under your authority and make some votes here. Okay, moving on, we're going to wrap this up real fast. We have written, oh, we already did written communications. Okay, oral communications number two. Do I have anyone wishing to speak on an item that is not on the agenda?
There are none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And we will now adjourn the meeting. It is 10:59 PM.